Here they come.
Thank you.
Have everyone in?
They're on their way. There they are.
Brendan, we all set?
Yep, go for it.
Okay, good evening to everyone and welcome to the July twentieth, twenty twenty-two meeting of the Town of Brighton Planning Board. My apologies for the delay in in starting this evening's meeting. We just had some conversations about the agenda which we will bring up in the shortly. Just want you to know that tonight's meeting is, of course, once again, virtual. That is a result of the governor's executive order. And until that has been been changed or modified in some way, we will continue to to meet virtually and hope that by August or September, we can be back in person again. At this time, I'd like the Secretary Jeff, if you could call the role tonight, please.
Altman?
Here.
Price?
Here.
Peter is not here. Brad Cox-Steiner?
Here.
Thank you. Asowski?
Here.
Ford? Ford is not.
We are expecting, I think, member Ford, and she may be joining the meeting in progress. But we can get going. Just before we do get going, though, and Bill, perhaps you were going to make this announcement. I'm just going to make a request that anyone who is on the call, please turn off your video until it is time for you to speak. It just helps us keep the Zoom meeting better organized if your videos are off, because that way you're not jumping to the top of the screen. So if you would, so we don't have to force off your video, if you would turn it off yourself, because we don't want to have to force off. Thank you so much.
Okay. Thanks. All right. At this point, we have called the role and we would like to do our agenda review with staff and members of the members of the board. John, do you do you want to start with a a motion on the an agenda modification?
Yes, thanks for asking. Yeah, I would like to make a motion to amend the agenda to move agenda item five P zero two dash twenty-two, the Telmedic Institute and Montessori School to the end of the public hearing and also to move five P N B one dash twenty-two, the Telmedic Institute item to the end of the public hearing also.
Okay, and John, you wanted to, I will recuse myself from those applications when they are heard. But I believe you you wanted to hear those at the same time. Is that is that correct?
Yes, that's right. I'm sorry. Yeah, and at that time, we would combine those two items for the public hearing and public comments. Thanks, Bill.
Okay. All right. There is a a motion. Do we have a a second to to amend the? Thank you, Karen. This is to amend the agenda for tonight's meeting. Any further discussion? Okay, I think this we can do fairly informal. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. All right, Jeff, do you want to kind of walk us through kind of the the agenda tonight? And I don't know that you need to do it in order as it is on the agenda rather than by the modification we just made.
Okay. I'll I'll do it in order that with the modifications that I mean, just so we can kind of keep that in order.
Okay.
Sixty oh three twenty-two, the application of burn bomb companies at hundred one fifty Metro Park for the the addition on their building. They they adjourn till the till the August meeting. So they adjourned for this month. They will not be here this month. Okay, seven P O one twenty-two, application of Norland Associates LLC, evolve additives, let's see, for conditional use permit for research and development facility and warehousing of plastic components manufacturing at three town line circle. Most of their application is in good order. I have a few questions in regards to conditional use permits that we like to get some answers to. They may have been presenting such, but I want to make sure that we have the record on for for them to be able to get their approval. But everything else, it's like it's in order. It's okay, some some P O. Does anybody have any questions about that one?
I don't know.
Seven P O two twenty-two, application of Winton Associates LLC and Jason Reinwald for Fox's Deli for a conditional use permit allowing an outdoor dining and association with existing restaurant at thirty-four fifty Witten Place. That one that's fairly simple. There's they're putting three tables of two chairs out in front on their sidewalk. They won't be blocking the sidewalk and the seating area will be away from the main main thoroughfare. Any questions on that one?
Not a question, but a, I guess, a comment for Jeff and Ken. Our our firm is involved with Winton Acquisitions LLC. We received site plan approval, but and that that particular involvement is over. But there is a application in for a sign on the project that we we helped prepare. Help the sign manufacturer prepare.
Who is the applicant for the outdoor seating?
It is the it does say application of Winton Acquisitions LLC and Jason Reinhold Reinwald from Fox's Deli as the last.
The on the application, the applicant is Jason Reinwald.
Okay.
If is, as long as the LLC is not on the application, I'm fine with you sitting in on that, Bill. Otherwise, it would fall into the same categories to tell me the institute.
Understood.
Yep. The seeker and the application are more filled up by Jason Reinwald.
Gotcha. So I think we're okay.
Thank you.
The next application is seven P O three twenty-two, application of Chris Sardone, owner and generator soup generator super center of United Upstate New York for site plan modifications to install twenty-seven kilowatt standby generator in the side yard and property at one fifteen Metro Park. There's a lot of room between the site. They they're not. It will put it in the rear yard due to some other site circumstances which they'll they'll be able to attest to. There isn't. There's a lot of room between them and the neighboring building. The only thing that really came up was the Conservation Board recommended some sort of screening, some landscape screening for the for the generator that's on the side. There are a lot of other utility components in that area. So I think some of the questions we can ask will if they'll interfere with any of the existing utilities where they're going to put the generator.
Okay. Any other questions? No, thank you.
Next is seven P O four twenty-two, application of Mount Reed Emerson Street Properties LLC and Herc Rentals for a conditional use permit approval to offer a construction equipment rental facility on at twelve twenty Brighton Henry Town Line Road. There's a few things in this application. We a lot of some of the drawings are hard to read and and almost illegible. And there's there's a few things on the site, the where they're proposing the storage of some of their equipment. It looks like it's only taking up a small portion of the site, which I think is not as intended. And they're they're looking to install a fence. And I looked at other hurt properties and they they propose an unscreened friends with barbed wire on top, which is something that's not allowed by Brighton Brighton Code and for the for our conditional uses of outside storage, it requires a solid fence. So that's some some of the information that I'd like to get cleared up from them.
Also, thanks, Jeff. I noticed in that PowerPoint that they attached. They mentioned twenty-four hour day, seven day a week operation. Yeah, I I really doubt that that's what they intend to do. I don't know. May maybe they do that in other locations, but kind of seems like overkill to me for renting construction equipment, you know, unless there's some emergency that comes up and they, you know, open up on a emergency basis for some client that that calls somebody. But anyway, we we can straighten that out when they when they talk.
Yeah, there was a there was another, it's a different place in the application that they gave.
Different hours.
Yeah, it's at eight to five. So we can ask them and and make get a good answer from them. Anybody have any other questions on that one?
No.
The next one on the agenda would be ten P M B one twenty-one, which is for the Quickleys. For a quickly owner for preliminary subdivision approval, site plan approval and demolition review to for the race to buildings and construct a gas station and island at nineteen fifty nineteen sixty-six Monterey on twelve corners. That one was adjourned by the applicant to the August meeting. The other one on the agenda is five P N B two twenty-two, the application of Bristol Valley Homes LLC and Pem LLC for a another a quickly is at the thirty-one oh eight East Ave location, and that's for a the preliminary site plan approval for to build the the gas canopy and re renovate the existing building on site. And was also adjourned by the applicant to the August meeting. And the next one will be that will be heard is five P O two twenty-two, the application of Telmuted Institute of upper Upstate New York and the Brighton Central School District for conditional use permit and approval to allow the Montessori School of Rochester to be located at two twenty idle idlewood road. That application, I think that there's as far as a conditional use, it's in good shape. There there are questions regarding regarding the traffic and the impact of the traffic on the the neighborhood. There's been a number of items submitted by the applicant to try to clear up that and show there's no impact, but as we know, there's a lot of comments from from residents regarding that. That's kind of the main issue for that. And related to that application, there's five P N B one twenty-two for the Telmuted Institute and Brighton Central School Districts for preliminary site plan approval, preliminary EPOD permit permit approval and preliminary conditional use permit approval for construction of a twenty thousand square foot building addition the reperuses of the former Brookside School. That one, there's a few outstanding items when speaking with staff that we would like to have before we make like a secret determination. So but a lot of the other parts of the application are are in pretty good order. So we won't be able to get a preliminary site plan approval at this point, but I I know in discussions with staff the application looks good enough to possibly be do a preliminary final in the future if the board would would be okay with that. There are concerns on this application, similarly to the Montessori School regarding the the closure of the entrance and the traffic along with public access to the the property. Again, they've the applicant has submitted some information regarding both of those, both of those specs. And in this instance, the all the traffic generated for the for the condition use permit for the Montessori School is is what is all all the traffic that's on the idlewood road is from the Montessori School. So the impact of the traffic is related to the conditional use permitted of the Montessori School unless so with the with the application of the Telmuted Institute, they're they're related and sorry to strip them apart. I think, but the the traffic issue is related more to the Montessori School. Does anybody have questions about those applications? Okay. Okay. And then there is after that's the last of the public hearings, and then we'll have we have a concept review for seven P N B one twenty-two application of Kim Bailey with Salt Properties for a concept review to raise an existing single family dwelling and construct a four thousand four hundred and thirty-five plus or minus square foot dwelling with a attached garage located full on with Hills Lane. It's just a concept review, but we did find international meetings, we did find some issues regarding on the sanitary sewer. It seems to be a private sewer that's connected to several houses, which is not not permitted in the town. So we are working with them to to figure out a solution to that and get that worked out.
Okay. All right. So we'll we'll have a a concept presentation for that. All right. And Jeff, remember, what is this is this is coming to us for concept because this needs this requires site plan approval?
Yeah, they're they're demoing an existing home and rebuilding a new home. And they they wanted they wanted to come in for a concept review with the planning board.
I see. All right. All right. Well. And what do you what do we got in the way of signs tonight?
Um, there are six signs.
Okay. All right. Board members have any questions? Comments? Need for additional information? All right. So based on our modified agenda, actually, I do have to step back and let's let's go back to our agenda quickly. I I don't. I'd like to look for approval of the June fifteenth meeting minutes. I don't recall receiving the May eighteenth meeting minutes, so I'd like to see if there's a motion to approve the June eighteen. I'm sorry, the June fifteenth meeting minutes.
I think Karen wasn't there, so I don't know. We have a quorum to prove those minutes.
That is true. She was not there. You weren't in June either?
No.
Okay. We will leave meeting minutes to another meeting. Jeff, we'll we'll proceed now with public hearings. Could you confirm that the public hearings have been properly advertised for tonight's meeting?
The public hearing was advertised for the planning board and the Daily Record of July fourteenth, twenty twenty-two.
Okay. So based on our modified agenda, I would like to ask, call for application seven P O one twenty-two, that's the application of Norland Associates LLC as owner and evolve additive solutions, Inc. Let's see for a conditional use permit to allow for research and development facility with warehousing at three town line circle. Is there someone here tonight representing the applicant?
Uh, yes, sir. I'm Aaron Stuckey, representing evolve additive solutions tonight.
Hello, Aaron. How are you?
Uh, doing well.
Great. Aaron, we we just kind of ask you to with a with a conditional use permit, we we typically ask you to walk through your operations. Talk about operations, talk about materials, talk about how materials are delivered to the site, they're stored on site, any waste is removed. We're we're generally looking for an understanding of the operation and and how it might affect neighbors or, you know, folks who are working there and appreciate a little background on that.
Certainly. I do have a short presentation, you know, showing kind of some of the you know, things like the parking and things of that nature. If you'd like me to share that, otherwise I can just speak to the I guess this is the site plan high level here in front of us. But I I'll leave that choice up to you.
We will let us see if we have that that capability. Brendan or or Jeff, can we allow an applicant to share screen or?
We we usually don't. We go. We like to go with the submitted materials and work based off.
Okay. That's fine. I can explain it relative to the submitted materials.
Thank you.
Of course. So let me start out giving a brief piece of information about evolve additive solutions. We are a company that develops equipment and materials for the plastics components manufacturing industry. So in simpler terms, we're a company that makes a three D printer. And here in Rochester, we have a research and development facility. That facility is currently housed. We lease space at two eighty five, two eighty-five Metro Park approximately. I think it's about a quarter mile east of this three town line circle. And the site that we're talking about is going to serve as an expansion of our R and D facility concentrating in materials, physics and chemistry and our planned use for the space, the six thousand square feet, as you can see, and the screen there is to be primarily warehousing and some dry lab space. Yeah. So at this point in time, we expect to have about a maximum, sorry, a maximum of ten employees there in the space between the hours of seven AM and five PM with the opportunity that we may have infrequent visitors coming through, you know, to see the the laboratory space, you know, if the CEO wants to bring in some company to show, you know, how we do things, the things of that nature. Our operations would in general be Monday through Friday, again, at that seven AM to five PM kind of timeframe. So looking at that six thousand square feet, our expectation is to utilize two thousand square feet of it for warehousing kind of towards the back of the space as shown here. So that would be the upper section of that drawing that's currently on the screen. We would also use approximately two thousand square feet for laboratory space, and this would be a dry laboratory space. So running we call them life test fixtures. So running to see how the equipment performs over time. And then the remaining space kind of closer to the the bottom of the drawing as shown on the screen, the front of the building would be utilized for offices and conference rooms for the people who would be operating the laboratory equipment and then also working back in the laboratory space. So our expectation would be, you know, for a two thousand square foot laboratory that you would need about, oh, yes, there's the rough layout for how we would be laying out the the space itself inside of that six thousand square foot footprint. So in terms of parking with the warehousing, we would need, based on the size of the warehouse and, you know, one person really working back in there. Right now, it's kind of off and on. That would be about one, maybe two parking spaces and the office space, I believe, two thousand, approximately two thousand square feet works out to about eight parking spaces for that section and the remaining two thousand space of laboratory space would be, I think it's seven parking spaces based on the Brighton Town Code two thousand five dash twelve, which is sorry, three hundred and fifty square feet per sorry, one parking space for three hundred and fifty square feet. Got that backwards in my head. Sorry. So looking at the site plan itself, if you'd be willing to roll back up, we can look at the total parking spaces around there in the site between the two buildings there at the town line circle. The two buildings, it's a total of looking at my other screen to double check my numbers, two hundred and twenty-two parking spaces around the two buildings, approximately seventy-seven of which are actually around building number three, which our space would be part of. In terms of how we would be looking at deliveries and freight operations, right? The existing trucking route for freight, if we're receiving toner materials in in a in a tractor trailer freight type truck, the existing truck truck route for these buildings actually goes around the north side, trying to look at that, the north side of building two and circles around behind the existing building, building three, and then comes back around towards town line circle. So we would be expecting that all of our freight deliveries would be following that path as well, simply because between the two buildings, it's very difficult for semis to make the turn. And so we're we've talked with the landlords and and he's pointed out that that's the existing truck route, and we would be expecting our freight to follow that same route. At this point in time, you know, we would also, there's a potential that we would have UPS or FedEx or postal service deliveries from time to time. And those could either be coming back to the front door, depending on how FedEx comes in, or possibly to the back to the kind of loading dock area at the back side of the building. That would be the the western side of the building. And if if you want to scroll back up to the site plan, I think it might be helpful for people just to see kind of the general description there. So yes, in terms of the truck routes, it would be going around off of the town line circled road, then up the backside of building two, which is the right hand side of that site plan kind of up to the top of the site plan around the top, and then you would be able to back a semi into the loading dock that is kind of at the western edge of our site. The top as shown here in the site plan drawing. In terms of, you know, one of the other questions I think that you had also was looking at, you know, things like trash generation. At this point in time, what we would be expecting to be producing and trash generation to be standard office trash and then potentially dry toner type materials, those actually we dispose of using safety clean. That's our vendor for the removal of wet and dry materials at two eighty-five Metro Park, and we expect to use them removing the materials from the back of the building at the loading dock there as well for the dry materials that we that we would be generating in this proposed use. No unusual solid or liquid materials would be introduced into the sanitary sewers. And we have no plans for any special events to be held at the site. It's primarily warehousing and then a laboratory space. So I think that covers things, but if you have questions, please, I would be quite happy to answer them for you.
Aaron, is that loading dock that you mentioned, is that existing?
Yes, it is an existing loading dock. I think there may be some need to work on the height of it, but it is an existing loading dock that's already there from the previous occupant.
Okay. Okay. And Jeff, you didn't you didn't see any part of this application that required any anything more than a building permit? With regard to site planner, site plan approval?
No, they might. They, I mean, if they're gonna have a sign, they'll need a sign.
Sure.
Sign approval, but besides that.
Okay. All right. All right, I so as far as operations, hours of operations, parking, truck access. Guess I guess you've covered it. The maybe the only other thing is is there any exhaust I saw on that second slide that there was hood, I believe, hoods to does anything exhaust outside or is that just?
Very good question.
I saw something.
Yes, so the the hoods would actually be for the the best way to describe it is kind of a a toner similar to what you would have in a printer. So that would actually be filtered, so it's not actually leaving the building. It's more just to have a space for our people to work so that they're not making a large mess of all the laboratory. a space for our people to work so that they're not making a large mess of all the laboratory space when they spill, or if they would happen to drop a, a toner cartridge on the floor, much like what happened the last time I tried to load a toner park cartridge into my printer here at home.
Understood. Okay, thank you.
Bill, if I could just briefly interrupt and note for the record that member Ford has now joined the meeting and is present and participating.
Thank you. Okay, does the board have, any other board members have questions for Aaron?
Hi, this is John. I have a question. Are there any concerns with compatibility with any of the other tenants? Are they okay with Evolve being there and is Evolve okay with the other tenants being where they are located in your, in that same building?
We have no concerns with the other tenants in the building, either building three or building two at this time. Right now, actually, building three has a large number of, I believe vacancies with landsman being their, their offices kind of at the other end of the building from us, and there's not a lot of other tenants in the space right now. So no real concerns from us or that I'm aware of with the other tenants.
Very good, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions?
I was interested in knowing a little more about the type of employees that work there. Obviously, there's some office staff. Are the rest of the employees of the 10 people there, are they all scientific lab workers? Or what are the jobs being done there? And what kind of workers do you employ?
Yes, the majority of the workers would be kind of a more of a research scientist type of position and also some technicians who would be there operating the, the fixtures within our laboratory space. Let me kind of running through the numbers in my head, I think it's approximately three or four technicians and then also three or four laboratory scientists. And then one person who works as a technician and, you know, also would be covering the warehousing area. So kind of bachelor's degree scientist people, and then one or two people who would be more advanced degrees and that type of nature.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Jason, do you have any questions? Did you hear that, Aaron?
I believe so. I believe the question was if there's any unusual solid or other waste being disposed of down the drain. And in this case, for, sorry, for this space, we have no plans to do that. We utilize Safety Clean to remove any materials that we would be generating other than general office trash, which would be able to go out in the standard trash. Did that answer your question, Jason?
It did, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Julie, how about yourself? Were you able to join in time to hear Aaron's presentation?
I did, and my apologies for the snafu once again.
All right, any, but you're good with? Any? Okay, great. Ken, do you have any comments or questions?
I'm all set, thank you.
Okay.
I just, I just have a couple of questions. Have you been in contact with the fire marshal about what approvals or what you would need for some sprinkling of the building?
I believe there has been some contact. I believe the really tracking to be the same as what we would be needing or what we have needed in two eighty five Metro Parkway. But we'll also continue that, Jeff, as we, you know, as we look at what's going into the building, moving forward of that.
You won't have any problems meeting those standards?
I do not expect to have any problems meeting those standards.
Okay. And will, will anything be stored outside the building?
No, not, we have no plans to store any materials or anything outside the building at this time.
Okay. That'll be my question.
Okay, thanks, Jeff. All right, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience tonight that cares to address this application? Jeff or Brendan, let us know if there's anybody out there. If you are interested, there is a raise hand feature.
I'm not seeing anyone.
Okay. If you don't have that feature, depending on the device you're watching on, just wave your arms around frantically and we'll find you.
I'm not seeing anybody.
All right. Okay, thank you. Aaron, appreciate it. At this point, we are going to move on in the agenda. Our next application is 7PO222. This is the application of Jason Reinhold Fox's, I'm sorry, Jason Reinwald Fox's Deli La Cie for conditional use approval to allow outdoor dining at an existing restaurant located at 3450 Winton Place. Jason, is, is Jason here or someone representing Fox's Deli?
Yep, I'm here.
Good evening.
Hi, how are you?
Well, thank you. Again, yours is a conditional use application. We would like to know a little bit about the operation and what you're proposing, similar to our last applicant.
Yeah, sure. So this is Fox's Deli over in Winton Plaza. We are looking to put three small tables outside of the restaurant. Each morning we'll put them out front. Each day when we close, we'll put them back inside. This just to allow some of our guests to take their meals and eat them outside. This is Fox's Deli that's been around in that building since 1975. So nothing else is really changing, just trying to add a couple of tables outside.
Jason, though, when would that be? That before, are you, are you open for dinner? Is this for both lunch and dinner?
We're open just for lunch right now, so 11 AM to 3 PM, Monday through Saturday.
Okay. And that would be the same time as, that you would ask for the outdoor seating?
Yes, sir. They probably, the tables would probably be out there 15 minutes before we open, so like between 10:30, 10:45 in the morning, just to get set up and then would be broken down no later than 3:15, 3:30 as we close the restaurant down.
This doesn't seem like a substantial increase in your, in your seating capacity. You're, you're not anticipating an influx or a need for additional employees, or you're able to do this with existing staff?
Yes, sir, yep.
Okay. And could you just tell us a little bit about the, the way that the, the food is served? Does a, does a, someone bring it out to them? And I, I think what we're, we're trying to also know is, you know, is it served on paper products or on kind of a China product that, we just want to kind of assess how much potential debris is outside.
Yep, I understand. So the, the plan for right now is to serve it all on paper products. So this would be more a place for a guest is taking food to go to sit outside and enjoy it. We don't plan on serving any of the food on China out there right now, just given the basic layout of the restaurant, it doesn't make, it wouldn't be easy for us to do that. So we decided to take the easy route this way and just really just provide an amenity for our guests to sit outside in this beautiful weather and just enjoy a Reuben or some Atebowl soup while they're, while they're outside.
Okay. Brendan, do you mind scrolling to that sketch that, of the front? So is, is one of those representing a, say, a trash can?
Yep.
Does say that, yes, okay.
Yeah.
All right.
Okay, so then. That'll be the one that we provide for outside. There is an additional trash can that the plaza provides that would be to the right. So there's, there's plenty of trash receptacles out there that there wouldn't be a mess. And we do plan on having somebody circle out there every 10, 15 minutes, depending on how busy it is, to make sure that the trash is picked up. We stay presentable to the public.
Okay, and no other, no other lighting or signage is necessary? This is just supplementing what you've already got?
Yep, exactly. Just trying to take advantage of this beautiful weather in the summertime.
All right. All right, those are my questions. Board members have questions for Jason?
No.
That's Julie. John?
Yeah, just one question. Jeff, do you anticipate maybe putting, having bollards with the strap running along the top to kind of demarcate your tables from the rest of the sidewalk, or don't you feel maybe that's not necessary?
I'm sorry, I don't think I follow what you're asking.
Yeah, you know, some, sometimes like on the outdoor tables at Park Avenue, the restaurants will put up bollards with those stretchy straps to go between them to kind of segregate their tables from the rest of the sidewalk.
I gotcha.
Yeah, do you anticipate doing that, or don't you think that's?
I don't think, I don't think we'll need that. The, the tables are fairly small. They're barely 24 inches wide, so we're gonna hug them right on the wall underneath the front windows there at the restaurant. So it should, we should not have an issue with people knowing that that's for the restaurant.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Jason or Karen?
I'm all set.
Thank you. Jason?
I'm all set.
All right, thank you. Jason, a little, just a little heads up, your microphone's a little, a little scratchy for us.
I, I get a new laptop Friday, I think so.
Know the feeling.
All right. Jeff, do you have questions?
Just, is there gonna be any table service outside, or is it gonna be grabbing, go outside?
For right now, the plan is grab and go outside. If we do decide to switch to table service, is that something that I should reach out to you guys for?
No, I don't think it's an issue, just.
Thank you.
Jeff, you all set?
All set.
Ken Gordon, do you have any questions?
No, I'm all set, thank you.
All right. Thank you, Jason. I will just ask or state that this is a public hearing. And if there's anyone in the audience that cares to address this application, please raise your hand and we'll call on you. Brendan and Jeff can see the, see if you raise your hand and turn your screen on. Not seeing anybody?
Not seeing anybody.
All right. Okay. Jason, thank you.
Thanks.
All right, that brings us to application 7P3 dash O322. This is the application of Chris Sardone, owner and Generator Supercenter of Upstate New York, agent for site plan modification to install a 27 kilowatt standby emergency generator in the side yard of property located at 115 Metro Park. Is Chris here tonight?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Yeah.
Okay.
All set. So.
Representative Jesse for the company, putting, putting the generator in is here to represent me.
I see.
Should be here.
Yes, I'm here.
Okay.
Good evening.
Hello.
Jess, would you just give us your name and, and address for the record and then just please explain the the proposal and why it's gonna go where it is, kind of stuff?
Sure. So my name's Jess Rowley, representing Generator Supercenter. Our office is at 1100 Jefferson Road. The reason for the generator going on the side is there's just not enough room at the back of the building. Where the building is on the map, the asphalt parking lot is directly behind it. And per code, the generator has to sit two feet off from the building. And then we need five feet from any openable window, doors or fence. So there is no option to install it in the back of the building. The utility room for the building is right adjacent to where we're gonna put the generator. Basically where the B is in block is the utility room where the electric and the gas meter is located, and then also the breaker box. So the plan is to come right off from that, the generator will sit two feet off the building. And I have the generator specs as well, if that's necessary for it.
There are, we do have some professional engineers on the board and would you just generally walk through the, the specs? I think we, we do get, we, we would, well, we would just like to know the, the source of the fuel and just kind of size, height above grade and what the decibel levels are and how often it self tests itself.
Sure. So this is a liquid cooled, it's a 27 KW liquid cooled generator, which the liquid cools run on a lower RPM than an air cool does. The decibel is a 70 decibel. And it'll test once a week for roughly 10 minutes and we can program what time and day we want it to test at. And then when it's actually under load, that is the max is the 70 decibel when it's under load. When it's testing, it'll be at a lower decibel rate. The size of the generator is 62 inches long, which will be parallel to the building. The width is 30 inches wide, and then the height is 39 inches tall. And the fuel source.
39 inches?
39 inches tall.
Okay.
So it's three, you know, three and a quarter feet tall. And then it will sit on a four inch tall gen pad, which is a concrete fiber mixture that is made for the generator to sit up, and it'll be bolted down to that.
Okay. All right, have you, are you proposing any type of, well, tell us a little bit about the surroundings and adjacent neighbors? And how, how close they are?
The building that's next to it looks like it's a large industrial building. They have two very big AC conductors outside, which are 12 feet by seven feet and five feet tall. They are roughly, I didn't measure exactly how far away, but the width of the, Chris may know the width of the property away, but they've gotta be 200 feet roughly. If not more.
Okay. From an aerial photo, I just checked out an aerial photo and looks like it might be closer, but it looks like it, it is industrial with, with large condenser units outside on that, on their, on their west side, so.
Yep, it'll be exactly adjacent essentially to where the generator is. So they're much larger in size. There's also two electrical boxes that are actually larger than the generator that will sit in that vicinity as well, too.
All right. Let's open this up to other board members, please, for any questions or comments. John, do you have any?
Yeah, no, I don't, I don't have any additional questions. Thanks for asking, yeah.
All right. Karen Altman?
So you are not proposing any screening around the generator itself, is that correct? Any kind of landscape screening to, to go around the, the area that's taken up by the mechanicals? Is there room to do that?
We were, oh, go ahead. Sure. Per code, we could put, Mr. Sardone and I spoke, we could put bushes in between the generator and the street if necessary. Per code, it would have to be more than five feet away because you've got the intake on one side, the exhaust on the other side. So if needed, we could put bushes five feet away from. Um, so if needed, we could put bushes five feet away from in between the generator and the street. Five feet is the minimum.
Okay, thank you.
No problem.
Okay, Julie, do you have any questions or comments?
Uh, I do not.
All right, thank you. And uh Jason?
I'm all set.
All right, thank you. Uh, Jeff, how about you?
Um, I'm assuming you look at this, but is there any conflict with any of existing utilities that are, that are kind of in that area too?
No.
Okay. And was there any site work besides the concrete pad?
Nope. Nope.
I'm all set.
All right. Uh, Ken Gordon, how about you?
Nothing from me. Thank you, Bill.
All right. All right, um. I think we will move on and ask if there's anyone in this, uh, anyone in attendance tonight that cares to address this application? Uh, please raise your hand.
Not seeing anybody, Bill.
All right, all right, all right. Um, thanks for the presentation. We will be moving on at this point.
Thank you.
Good evening. All right, our next application is seven P oh four dash twenty-two. This is the application of Mount Reed Emerson Street Properties LLC and Herc Rentals, H E R C Rentals. Let's see for a conditional use permit uh to allow construction equipment rental facility on property located at twelve twenty Brighton Henry at a Town Line Road. All right, I, anybody from Mount Reed Emerson Street Properties?
Good evening, um, this is Alan Cashin from Herc Rentals.
Hello, Alan, how are you?
I'm doing well, thank you.
Alan, if you would uh, this is uh one of several conditional use permits that we've been hearing about tonight. Uh, so our, our focus is on your, on the operation hours, uh, what it is that uh is gonna be stored outdoors uh and really just how everything is gonna function and if you could go, walk us through that, we'd appreciate it.
Sure, just to give you a little background about Herc Rentals. Um, we're an equipment rental company with three hundred and forty branches or locations throughout the US and Canada. Uh, we're publicly traded on the New York Stock Exchange and we're headquartered out of Bonita Springs, Florida, which is the west coast of Florida. Um, what we're looking to do here is open up a rental facility and I heard your concerns earlier about um storage, fencing, um, potentially landscaping, et cetera, and we are here to comply with um any and all requirements that the city requires. Um, our intent is to operate our business Monday through Friday, eight to five. However, we are a first responder for emergencies, natural disasters and any of our customers who are requiring emergency service uh twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. It's very odd. However, we do offer that service up to um, to help the local community and the surrounding areas. Um, we, we plan to um utilize the existing wood slatted fence and repair it as needed. Uh, typically, we put barbed wire on the top of our fences. However, if the city is not requiring it, we will absolutely not put it up there. We plan to utilize the space to store and rent um equipment. Um, our goal is to rent equipment, not store equipment. Um, so essentially, we love to see empty yards at our facilities. Um, we rent aerial equipment, forklifts, generators, um, small excavators, uh, cooling equipment, et cetera. Um, I'm just trying to think of a few other things that we typically do at our branches. We have a small shop area. It's about, I think it's about sixty-five hundred square feet on this facility on a two point five acre site. We will have approximately five employees um and we will be filing the pertinent permits for electrical and plumbing. Um, electrical for some kind of disconnects for our air compressors, et cetera. Plumbing for um oil tanks and reels, essentially motor oil, hydraulic oil and waste oil. Um, they're typically five hundred gallon tanks, double walled tanks that we keep inside our shop. And we dispose of our waste oil through Safety Clean. Um, I heard one of the other applicants used the same vendor that we use. And we will be installing signage, so we will file for the pertinent permits for signage and we will be doing some minor office upgrades, basically just cleaning and painting. And I think I covered it all. Um, we'll have a customer parking area off of uh Brighton Henrietta Town Line Road and we will have our yard entrance off of um, I don't know what the, the adjacent street is, but our yard exit and entrance will be away from where our customers enter and, and exit the facility. I think I covered everything, but I'm uh willing to try and answer any questions you may have from me.
Alan, let me, let me just ask you, uh, who, who is your primary customer? Is it uh, is it contractors that that get accounts with you or is it uh, you know, bill prices of the world that can, you know, come in and rent something as a, as a resident um, you know, from a, like a retail standpoint?
It's typically contractors, but we have certainly have a small walk-up business. You can walk in and rent a uh, a chainsaw or a small um, concrete mixer if you need one. So we do have a small showroom. We will have a branch manager and a coordinator who sit in the front office. Um, like I said, it'll be approximately five employees. Um, it'll be um aesthetically pleasing for customers to walk up on. Um, and it'll be a typical, like a small tools showroom where you can walk in and rent small equipment or you could come in and rent large equipment for that matter.
And do you um, do you find that you typically um, deliver the equipment or does the, the customer uh pick it up and, and return it to you?
These days, ninety-five percent of our orders are either online or via text and we deliver and pick up most of the equipment that we um rent out.
Okay, okay.
Very small walk-up crowd these days.
Sure. Okay, um. So the uh, the building itself, you're, you know, the, it sounds like the tanks that you need for hydraulics and oils and things all remain inside. Um, so that's not gonna cause any kind of a combustible problem inside. Um, I'm sure Jeff will talk to you a little bit about, you know, any fire regulations or codes that uh that need to be complied with, but do you have any, any comments or is this typical for a, a rental operation of your kind?
Yes, ninety percent of our facilities, the uh oil tanks are inside the facility. They're double walled and they're permitted through the local fire marshal.
I see, okay. All right.
Have you been in contact with the fire marshal yet?
We have not. We, we have filed for our permits, but our general contractor will notify the fire marshal um to do a full inspection of everything we plan on installing.
Okay, thank you.
All right, um. Alan, just, and you have, to your knowledge, are you anticipating any exterior lighting uh to be added to the site?
Um, believe it or not, we actually rent light towers. Um, but we don't plan to install any additional lighting onsite. Um, if we have to work emergencies at night or after hours, we could certainly crank up one of our light towers and temporarily use that in the yard for safety purposes, but we do not plan to install any additional lighting.
All right. Okay, thank you. That's, that was one of the questions I had. Uh, other board members have questions for Alan? Uh, John Osowski, do you-
Yeah, yeah, thanks, Bill, for asking. I have, how do you handle fueling the equipment, you know, gasoline or diesel fuel? Do you do that? You know, at a regular commercial fueling station offsite or do you have some tanks onsite for that purpose?
For this site, there will be no fueling onsite. We'll go to a commercial gas station, but at other sites, we certainly do have fueling onsite and um, we don't plan to fuel from this facility.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Karen Altman, do you have any questions for, for Alan?
Um, Alan, where will equipment maintenance work be done? Is that inside or outside or a combination?
It's a combination, but it's typically inside the shop. Um, we have an air compressor with air reels and we have hose reels to change all the oil on the equipment, but that's typically the extent of what our mechanics work on. Anything significant, typically the equipment is sent out to be worked on.
Thank you.
Per-
You're welcome.
Per quote, our code, the maintenance and repair equipment shall um only be permitted and designated indoor areas. I'm just know that.
Understood.
Jason, do you have questions?
I'm all set.
Uh, Julie Ford, do you have questions?
I'm good, thank you.
All right. Uh, Jeff, are you all, all set at this point?
Uh, I have some questions. Um, are you in, are you gonna be putting in a generator or HVAC for the use of the building?
We are not. We utilizing the building as is.
Do you have any plans to strike the, the parking lot?
We do not. We plan on using it as is. However, if it is required, we certainly can do that or will do it based on what you require.
Okay. And so I just wanted to clarify that you are gonna be using the fence that's existing and just repairing the fence uh that's there?
Correct, and we may need to extend it in a few areas and we may need to add um some large uh either slide or swing gates on the backside and the front side. And if those gates need to be screened, uh, we will certainly screen them in the appropriate manner.
Yeah, yeah. Um, they will, they will need to be per, per our regulations.
Understood.
Yeah, um, this, this map that's the, that's currently shown on the screen, uh, it is, it is a lot, it is a small portion of the, the greater site. But some, so some of the things that I think we'll need is a, a site plan that kind of represents the entire site where you're, where the fence is gonna be and if you're gonna be doing any extensions on the fence because there's, there's a large number of variances on the site that have been, that have gone over time and I, I just wanna make sure that any work that's being done on the property will be able to comply with, with these uh variances that are existing already.
Jeff, I'll have to request that from the broker and the owner because I only utilized what I could find from them, so I didn't have anything else and I didn't uh hire an engineer or architect to uh draw up a site plan for us, so I'll see what I can um gather from the, from the, um, from the owner and the broker. If that's okay.
Yep, that's fine. And I can send you a letter, I, in the, in the letter that we sent, I can give you the information on the variances that, that we have for this property to make sure that you can comply with those.
Excellent, okay.
All set, Jeff?
Yeah, I'm all set.
Uh, Ken Gordon?
I apologize, I might have missed this. I'm sure you covered it, but if you wouldn't mind um letting me know again. On the map that we're looking at, there is a red rectangle uh which appears to be behind the building labeled HVAC generator, it looks like. What does that designate, sir?
Those are portable generators and cooling equipment that we typically put on rent. That's not to service the building. It's just a storage area when they're not rented. That's where we're gonna be storing them.
I see. All right. That was all I wanted to want. Thank you.
Okay. All right, uh, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience that cares to address this application? Jeff and Brendan, let us know if there is anyone?
I'm not seeing anybody, Bill.
Okay. All right. Let me say at this point, um, application uh under, you do have an agenda in front of you, application uh ten P N B one dash twenty-one application of nineteen fifty, nineteen sixty-six Monroe Avenue LLC uh has adjourned, that's the Quickleys, application uh has adjourned until our August meeting at the applicant's request, uh as has application five P N B two dash twenty-two. That's Bristol Valley Homes LLC owner and PEM LLC contract vendee. This is uh on an East Avenue and that has been requested to uh adjourn to our August meeting as well. So uh, at this point, uh Jeff, correct me if I'm wrong, I believe we have the uh Talmudic uh Institute of Upstate uh applications which does include the uh application of the Montessori School uh as the applications next to be heard.
Okay.
Okay, uh, this is where I will uh recuse myself and I will turn off my uh, my camera and microphone and ask John Osowski to assume uh chair of the meeting at this point.
Right, thank you, Bill. Thank you. As uh, as Bill mentioned, we were uh combining the public hearing for five P dash zero two dash twenty-two Talmudical Institute and Montessori School and five P N B one dash twenty-two Talmudical Institute um applications. Jeff and or Ken, do you wanna remind when we, when uh, when the public wishes to speak, remind them about uh three minute limitation or do you wanna do that later after the-
We, we can talk about that a little bit now, but um I think we do um wanna give the applicant an opportunity to present. Uh, there are some additional materials. Um, we will, because it looks like we have a good number of folks who want to have their say in the interest of giving everyone an opportunity to speak their piece and share with the board their thoughts um and to give the board the opportunity to hear each one of you. Uh, we will be asking um the public, when you do make your presentations, to try to keep your remarks two, three minutes or less. To assist you in doing that, um, we will have uh one of our staff members post uh the three minute timer on the board uh on the Zoom meeting. I'm sorry. I know that uh for some of you, it was difficult to see that last time. I think we've figured out why that was and I think we've made some adjustments or at least we've planned some adjustments that will allow you all to see that timer. Um, if you're not seeing that timer, um, I would ask you to just send a group chat to us and let us know that you're unable to see it and we'll try to adjust matters for your benefit. Uh, but with that, I think, um, yes, I think we should, uh, John, turn it over to the applicant and hear from the applicant.
All right, thank you, Ken. Is there anyone here from the applicant that wishes to uh address the planning board?
Sure, I think you can hear me now. I think I've been unmuted. Hi, this is Betsy Brug. I was here at the last meeting back in May and we're pleased to be here again tonight. Uh, I'm looking at a screen with a site plan and I see the acting chairman in the corner, so hopefully you can see me and hear me, okay?
Yes.
On the uh Zoom tonight, um Rabbi Noble from the Talmudical Institute of Upstate New York is on um, on the meeting. Matt Tomlinson, our civil engineer from Marathon Engineering. David Cruzy, our transportation um engineer from SRF. Uh, David Hamlin, Hamlin Architects. Uh, and uh Drs. Cynthia Gowan, the head of school for the Montessori School is also available um with respect to any questions regarding the Montessori School. Um, so to start off, uh, we gave a pretty thorough uh presentation and absorbed a lot of comments and input at the last meeting. Um, it's taken a little time for us to come back because the board did uh request a, a fair amount of information and data, so we went to work and uh secured some uh you know, professional reports and information and responded to comments. Uh, so a pretty uh substantial submission was made. Um, in connection with both applications, they are two separate- Um, in connection with both applications, they are two separate applications, although you're hearing them together. Uh, so we did give you a response to all of the um staff comments, technical comments. I think there were some county comments in there. Um, we were asked to uh provide some additional analysis and data. So um in the material that was submitted, you would have seen a supplemental uh traffic uh submission from SRF addressing um kind of supplementing the initial trip generation that was provided. Um, most of the information about accidents and accident history, warrant analysis for traffic signals, that kind of thing that we will get into. Um, we have updated, I think, the EAF that we were requested to do. Um, we were asked to take a look at alternatives to Idlewood. Um, so there's a loop study that was uh looked at two different uh avenues um for um looping around the building that was submitted. Uh, we also submitted a letter from uh Mark Henderson um as a security consultant, former police chief of the town of Brighton, um addressing um the questions with respect to whether or not a um public access easement could be provided, really addressing and kind of defining what the security issues are with allowing that. Um, and we were also asked uh about the struc- structural integrity of the entrance off of Witten Road uh off of the bridge. So we do have a structural engineering report um documenting that that bridge is uh sound for our use and for um, not just for uh regular traffic, but also for construction vehicles. Um, so we get, we submitted a fair amount of information. Um, I think what I'm going to do is turn it over to Matt Tomlinson uh to go through some of the key items. I think, you know, the traffic being um, you know, a significant issue and the uh, the question about the looping around and um potential abandonment of Idlewood. So I think Matt hopefully is on.
Yeah, good evening, everyone. Matt Tomlinson, Marathon Engineering. Uh, as Betsy, Betsy mentioned, we have submitted quite a bit of additional information that we believe addresses the comments and questions raised at the last time around. Uh, I'm primarily going to focus here just on, on that uh piece in the analysis that we did relative to exploring uh alternate means of access to route all traffic for the property out to Witten Road. And then I'll turn it over to Dave Cruzy, uh who, as Betsy mentioned, is our traffic consultant. Uh, we did um analyze the bridge, as Betsy mentioned, and have submitted a letter uh stating that the bridge is suitable for H twenty and HS twenty loading. Um, so that is suitable for all construction vehicles as well as emergency access ingress and egress uh meeting fire code for weight. Uh, and there's no requirements for restricting the amount of weight or traffic on that bridge based on uh the structural engineers' analysis of that. So that answers uh that question. The uh analysis that we performed was um attempting to list out and explore the potential impacts for routing a driveway either around the north side of the existing school to connect the parking on the east side with the west side of the property as well as giving access out to the Witten Road from the front existing bus loop, previous bus loop and parking area that's utilized for the Montessori School and some of the other uses within the building today. And so I, I know that the uh board had asked several questions regarding those. And I'm happy to, at the end of this, go through any specific questions that the board may have. But the ultimate result of both of those routings uh is that it, it is while possibly feasible, has several large impacts, negative impacts to uh both Taiuni as well as Montessori and the property as a whole. On the north side, we are constrained by the floodplain and water course EPod. And it would add a significant or not insignificant amount of impervious area disturbance and fill with those, within those environmentally sensitive areas where we are looking to avoid uh any more than is necessary um to minimally install as part of the project. Uh, as well as additional cost and routing of uh the vehicles through that portion of the north side close to what is proposed to be the new entrance for space in what we're calling the north wing. On along the south side, there is uh several concerns that we have, uh not least of which would be routing of all traffic adjacent in between the Montessori School, the green space utilized by that school tenants and adding additional lighting, drainage, uh driveway improvements and traffic along the rear of the property lines. There's also a cost consideration and I know that cost to the applicant is not a primary factor in deciding or analyzing uh portions of improvements that may or may not be necessary. I know that there was some uh cost analysis suggested or provided by some neighbor comments that we received and reviewed uh and but the, you know, th- those contemplated really just kind of the surface improvements, not the lighting, the drainage and uh some of the unit pricing was significantly lower than what we're seeing on the construction side. So for all of those reasons, uh we believe that we have done our due diligence as far as analyzing the viability or suitability of either of those routes. And given the results of the traffic analysis and the fact that even routing all traffic through to Witten Road would not meet the warrants for any kind of a traffic signal or other calming uh devices to be placed in Witten Road. Especially during the peak hour, there's a, a potential concern there for traffic. So uh again, we can absolutely explore any other specific questions that the board might have, but that's a quick overview relative to that. Uh, in the additional submitted materials that we provided to the planning board at request with the last tabling meeting, we did reply uh with responses in writing to all of the comments received to date. And many of those were clarification items specific to uh generating a uh EAF, which is a, a secret form uh specific to the Montessori operation and approval, a site plan and parking numbers specific to that for the planning board's consideration as well. And with that, I wanted to turn it over to Dave Cruzy just to talk a little bit about the work that he's done in analyzing the traffic, which also included some of the requested analysis relative to accidents on both the Idlewood and the Witten roadside and traffic circulation. So David, if you're there, um, go ahead and talk them through that, please.
I am. Can everyone hear me?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you. Uh, so yes, we uh submitted as part of a uh, an updated uh traffic submission. Um, additional information that uh was in response to the town, as Matt said. And um I'll just give you a brief summary of what we did. Um, some very uh high-level findings, and if there are any specific detailed questions, uh we can certainly address them um later tonight. Um, right off the bat, we looked at um a signal warrant analysis at the Witten Road and Columbus Way intersection. That entailed uh collecting traffic data over a twelve-hour period. Excuse me, I have a uh kid in the back. Um, over a twelve-hour period uh to use uh to, is part of our uh signal warrant investigation. Another thing as part of that is looking at um crash data. And we looked at crash data, not only that intersection, but also in the um neighborhood from two-twenty Idlewoods uh up to Westfall and uh found uh no, no crashes uh along the Idlewood um uh roadway. Uh, we looked at a speed study. We took a, a sample of speeds, vehicle speeds along Witten Road um at the Columbus Way intersection and found that speeds were generally operating as um uh at the posted speed limit. Um, we looked at capacity analysis or intersection operations at both the Witten Road Columbus Way intersection as well as the Idlewood uh roadside um under existing and alternative conditions. Um, and found that uh levels of service or how well the intersections are operating, are operating at a uh acceptable uh levels of service during uh, during the peak hours. And lastly, we, we looked at a quantitative review of Idle Road, Idlewood Road um in terms of uh traffic and uh daily vehicles and um spelled that out uh in our, in our traffic letter. And again, if there are any specific questions, we can certainly address them um as they come up.
So Betsy, I didn't know if there was anything else that you would like to add, otherwise we can open it up for questions.
So um Cindy Gowan is on, and I think there were a couple of questions about Montessori. I think we've actually answered some of the questions in the past, but I, I did see that um you know, there, there might be some questions about um the traffic specific to the Montessori School. We are reducing overall traffic coming out of the project. Uh, coming out of the property with the Montessori being the only user proposed for Idlewood. Um, but I think Cindy can give you a little firsthand uh background and she can also confirm um, you know, that, that they have no plans for expansion.
So thank you again for having us this evening. Um, as I mentioned, when I spoke in May, um, I've been a longstanding member of Brighton, the Brighton community um and represent our school that uh has safely been a part of the Evans Farm neighborhood for even longer. Um, many of our families are Brighton residents as well. Uh, so I'm sensitive to the traffic concerns of my neighbors. It's like, we think of it as our neighborhood too. Um, what I, I wanted to, to say, as Betsy mentioned, um, you know, we really want to stay in our current location. We like being a part of the neighborhood. Um, our parents seek us out because of that aspect of our school. Um, and we don't have any plans for expansion. We don't have space for expansion. Um, uh, and we're not seeking that out. We want to continue to provide a high-quality education for young children. Um, and we're prepared to deepen our quality and not our quantity. Um, our, our primary concern, um mine and, and our boards and, and our, our families is really that when you look at the site, um, that where the um proposed driveway would go around the, the, the school would take away a great deal of the green, green space that we currently u- use as play space. Um, and then also create some pretty hazardous conditions as it crosses over and through um spaces that our, our children play in and also use to transfer stuff property. We don't have inner hallways on our side of the building. So our side of the building, I think, is older than the other side of the building. Um, and we don't, we don't have inner hallways. So um, uh, our children have to exit the building to kind of go around um to get to those places uh and garden spaces. Um, and I think that it would be a, a significant concern to not just lose those play spaces, but then also have incredibly young children, infants through six-year-olds. Um, uh, having, having a road go where they are usually walking. Um uh, that said, I think the only other question that, that um I saw in some of the commentary was around uh the daily average of vehicles for our school. Um, and it is ninety-six cars. We follow a school year calendar, so um typical to the Brighton Central School district calendar, ours is very similar. Um, on days that there are school, there are about ninety-six cars. In the summer, like right now, uh, we run summer camp and we have about half capacity um of, of cars, um, because we limit how many children we have and how many, how sta- how many staff we have. Um, but we're an everyday program, so it doesn't vacillate based on day as some, some preschools might. But I'm happy to answer any other questions regarding um regarding that, that particular piece.
All right, uh, thank you. I wanted to thank um thank the uh development team there for showing us the thought you put into considering options for providing access driveway both around the north side and around the south side. And for your, for your other considerations, providing the traffic study. At this point in time, I'd like to open it up to uh other members of the uh, the planning board for any questions that they might have. Jason, do you have any questions?
Um, so I think this is probably for, for David. Um can you talk a little bit about uh how you came up with the Montessori School traffic uh contributing seventy? Or what's it seventeen or eighteen percent of the total traffic Idlewood Road?
Sure. Um, so Cindy provided us a great uh table of um uh vehicle trips for both uh parents and staff. And as she just mentioned, uh approximately ninety-six vehicles or so uh come to the site. And so if you, if you count traffic going both ways, over the course of a day, uh it resulted in approximately a hundred and ninety vehicles or so um entering and exiting the uh Montessori School. And so out of the total traffic that is total average daily traffic that's on Idlewood, it ends up working out to be about seventeen percent of uh total traffic is attributed to the Montessori School.
All right, thank you. Um, Karen, do you have any uh questions or comments?
No, that was my question uh that Jason just asked, so I'm good at the moment. Thank you.
All right, thanks. Uh, Julie Ford, do you have anything?
Um, I also am, was interested in what, what is the relative increase in um uh access, and so that was helpful, but other than that, good.
Okay. Um you know, I, I have a concern that that the value of goodwill to the neighbors is being dismissed here by ri- writing off the north access driveway or the south access driveway. And there were, we're missing an opportunity here to eliminate this extra traffic going through the, through the neighborhood. I mean, there's really an opportunity here that it can be eliminated at what looks to me to be a relatively modest cost. I mean, two hundred thou- if it, if it is two hundred thousand dollars in the grand scheme of a uh, what looks to be, could be a ten million dollar enterprise here, four million dollars to acquire the property and six million dollars for construction estimate. Um, just throwing the numbers out there. So that's, that's a two percent, and we can gain, gain a lot by doing that. Is is, is there any opportunity here to to give further consideration of putting in a driveway?
John, I'll, I'll speak first before, this is Matt Tomlinson again, before Betsy chimes in, but I think that there is a uh what we've attempted to demonstrate, not only through that analysis, but also other submitted documentation, is that it's not just a consideration of the dollars here. There's definitely a concern from a form and function internal to the site as well as potential for future safety concerns, especially in the peak hour for all traffic going through Witten Road. Uh, the functionality and usage of that driveway has been there for a long period of time uh on this site and will be, there will be a benefit to the neighborhood and a reduction by us uh requiring other tenants specific to the north wing to utilize the Witten roadside. But from a, a functionality standpoint for the Montessori School access, um a whole lot of other reasons that, that we have provided in our submission documents. It, it really is important. Uh, I believe from a function standpoint and also uh just from a consequence standpoint to keep those two driveways. So Betsy and David, I don't know if you want to speak any further on that, or David, anything specific to Witten Road?
Well, I think you've covered fairly well the fact that, you know, the road capacity is there. There's actually no, no um there's no problem that would be remedied. It happens to be a kind of a subjective call that, you know, people want to cut this off, but the building is in the neighborhood. It has always been in the neighborhood. We're reducing the amount of traffic coming out of there. We're limiting it, limiting it only to the Montessori School. Um so no, there's, there is no interest in closing off the driveway. There certainly has been uh a very deliberate, thoughtful effort to um minimize the amount of traffic coming out of there. You know, the town You know, the rec department uses, those could have stayed over there. They're existing, but you know, the decision was made to push as much of that traffic over. It makes sense to keep the Montessori there. We do want to keep that driveway there. You know, my lawyer had on, I have to say, there's, there's really no. Basis for, you know, any requirement to close it off. It, and the intent is to keep it open. And I am going to point out that if there's ever any kind of change of use or some new user comes along. They're going to have to apply for another special use permit. So there's always going to be an opportunity for the planning board to revisit and review this. What we can do as applicants is to. Look at this in a diligent, thoughtful way and in a, you know, in accordance with professional standards, do the right studies and the analysis. Before we make any decisions and that is what we've done here. And the, the really the. You know, the impacts of putting a road through there on either side are pretty significant. And. You know, I would hope that the board wouldn't dismiss those, that they are significant. It's a lot of pavement that would be added. There's definite safety and security issues. Kind of above and beyond, actually, I think what we've even covered in the reports that are submitted. For the Montessori school, Cindy's there.
Sorry, I just wanted to add something to John, which I think is really important because I'm at the school every day. So I see the neighborhood use of our, our property. They come in and use the green space for running their dogs, you know, like they can, because it's big enough to take their dogs up leash and, and they play with them. They come to the playground spaces and they do use the, the green space that is there. And if you look at the site plan. Where this, the road would go on the south side, aside from just, you know. What I think are really serious safety concerns, it also wipes out all of the space and all of the, the green space that the neighborhood. Says that they use and that they enjoy. And so we use and enjoy that green space as well. We share that space with them. And we're happy to continue doing that. But with that, that road, if you look at where it would go, it would, because it would have to stay away from the building. Just a little bit, it would end up cutting things off in places that would then require us to put up fencing. Which would then limit access in places where they currently have access. So on the back of the building, you can see there's like, it looks like our awnings that are above the thing. Right now, that's not a fenced in area. It's just. There're blueberry bushes around it. So the children know not to go through, but if there were a street there, we'd have to fence it, which would mean no access to that space. So from a neighborhood perspective, I understand the, the question, but I also think that. You know, I'm, I'm also weighing that, that not just the safety of our children, but also the quality of the space that's left.
And can we pull up the site plan that shows the. Blue and magenta driveways that we're talking about so the people can see it?
And then can you pull up that, the drawing?
There you go. Just passed it. Thank you. Okay.
Just to give you some feedback on where, where that is in, in our, our school footprint. It cuts between, it goes through the blacktop area where the children currently play. It's a, it's a pavement area. For those of you with young kids, they really like pavement, which is really funny, but they do. But it also puts a road in between the school and the current playground. And goes right next to a place that we use as a hallway space. So walking around, there's a path that goes between those two, kind of the L shape of the school. Our gardens. And it's, it is a lot of extra additional pavement. That would, that would be required and then fencing that would need to be, be added as well for the safety of the children.
Yeah, I. Didn't think the, the blue option was a very good one. I think the magenta one could actually be tightened up a bit. To avoid running through the floodplain by. Creating its access point. At the northeast corner of the parking lot where the, where the dumpsters show now. That'll probably cut off about 40% of the length. Traffic wise, it may not be ideal, but you know. This should be a 10, 15 mile per hour kind of driveway anyway, not a 25 mile per hour road that I could get through a neighborhood.
If you don't mind, this is Ken Gordon, John. If you don't mind, could I ask some questions about? That magenta drive that might shed some light on, on this subject?
Yeah, please, Ken.
Thank you, John. And I'm not sure, Matt, if you're the best one to answer these questions. Tell me if you're not, and maybe somebody else on the team could. So I'm looking at the. Building plan and. Do you know what the current? Plan is for the northernmost wing of the Brookside facility? What, what's going to go into that space?
That question may be better for David Hanlon or Betsy, but my understanding is the community services that are currently in the building will be in that northern. Wing, which are the food cupboard, potentially parks and rec and some of the other tenants that are in, in the building today.
And I, I know Rabbi Noble is on this call. I don't know. Let's see if you would have an objection to having Rabbi Noble participate in this discussion. Rabbi? If you're there. Yes, yes, I'm here. I'm sorry. Thank you, Rabbi. Rabbi, what, what is the plan for the use of that northernmost wing of Brookside School, if you know?
If we, one second, if we're talking about the same thing there, like. I'm just trying to make sure I have this right. That's the, that's going to be the, the new parks and recs.
The new space leased to Brighton Recreation?
And parks, yep.
All right. And including the Brighton Recreation Senior Program, it's your understanding, right?
I believe so. I believe everything that's there from the town is staying.
Where, where is the main entrance planned to be? If you know, for that Brighton Recreation Program?
Well, we would, we, we are planning to do it right in the middle of your magenta road. Because the current main entrance is on the Idlewood side. So. The, they would be moving their offices and everything around. I can't really show you with this. I don't have control of that, but it's actually smack in the middle of where that magenta road is. We're planning a new entrance there. Well, you, you're close, move it a little further.
Move your cursor to.
Right, a little more. Right, that's it.
Yeah, Ken, just so, just so you're aware and other folks listening, that aligns with the corridors into that. Space for that main entry on, on that face of the building.
Well, I thank you for that, Matt. It would be impossible to put the entrance anywhere else.
Right. And so, so that entrance would be there. So we would expect to have. Brighton Recreation Visitors, seniors, participants in Brighton Recreation's summer day camps. Parking in the field, which is accessed from the Winton Road entrance. And then walking along the sidewalk towards that entrance, that what will be the new main entrance to Brighton Recreation is, is that what you would expect?
Correct.
Yep, that's correct. And we have oriented new sidewalk ADA spaces and accessible routes from that point, Ken.
Right. And, and during our summer day camp programs, which we run at Brookside School, if we were wanting to have our. Campers be able to go outside and play, how would they be able to do that? Could they? Could they come through the Montessori space?
No.
No, that's, that's locked off, isn't it?
Yes, it is for their security reasons.
Right. And could it come through? Could our kids run through the hallways of the Tommucicle Institute to get outside?
No, we're, we're expecting to put emergency access only to separate the Tommucicle Institute for their security.
So our children in our day program for Brighton Recreation for summer camp would then be exiting those doors and. Going out onto the green space where the purple asphalt roadway is planned?
Well, I, I think that they actually use that green space as part of their programming. But I guess if you put a big old road there, then the kids would have to walk alongside that road. And assuming they don't get into any trouble with the cars, they would walk around that way. So that would be correct. But I think that might not, you know, that might be a problem because they're currently using. That I believe they're using that green space right there where that big magenta road is.
I think they're actually using the green space on the other side, on the south side of the building, because we're more located towards the south side, but given the fact that we're going to be cut off from that physically. I, I do think it's important to note, as Ms. Gowan did for the Montessori children being impacted by the blue road. The Brighton Recreation campers are going to be impacted by the magenta road in the same manner. And, and of course, we're talking about summer programming. I don't know if anyone's looked at what happens with snow removal and snow storage and sightlines for either of these roadways. When you start plowing snowbanks up and having pedestrians in close proximity. Dave or Matt, anyone given any thought to that?
Ken, from a, from a sightline standpoint, John is correct, meaning internal roadways. It's not as significant, it's not an immaterial issue, but it's not as significant of an issue, given the traffic calming and expected low speeds through here. However. Snow removal, as well as, again, I, I want to bring up the potential impacts to floodplain and the EPOD. Obviously, EPOD permits are obtained through this board, but we really are, from an environmental standpoint, trying to limit the impacts. To those features on the site by locating development outside of those areas wherever possible. And this would definitely impact those. Routing all traffic for the site through a parking lot that is going to be utilized by all the tenants of the building. At the Winton roadside, if that was the only access point, also would not be ideal. And that's the reason for the geometry that we showed for that magenta line. Because you would not want to have, for example, seniors attending. That area of the building backing out as all traffic is routed through or vice versa, that, that would not be an ideal traffic routing as well internally to the site.
And just as to some comments that Betsy had made earlier about the. Record and as it stands now relative to the traffic impact of the continuation of the use by the Montessori school. I forget, how long has the Montessori school operated at this location?
Over 20 years.
And. If, if you could just remind me again, if the board were to approve the conditional use permit, thus. Allowing the Montessori to continue that operation, the, the school where it's been. At this location for the last 20 plus years. What would be the additional traffic above and beyond what we have as current conditions there?
There's zero additional traffic. If anything, there's a reduction in traffic by rerouting the town programs. And the food cupboard.
And I, Ken, you may be asking Cindy, just to confirm from a space and a student density standpoint, whether or not. There would be opportunity for additional students that might drive traffic for them in the future. Cindy, can you speak to that?
We, we don't, we're at capacity. We're full. We can't accept any more students. There's a small space adjacent to our space that we're looking at using, and it's not to add children, it's to space them out more. So, so when we're looking at our space, we, we want, we do not want any more students.
And, and so following that, Ken, of, of course, there, there would not be additional traffic generation due to additional parents and student arrival.
And the traffic was evaluated. The road capacity is, you know, adequate and we're operating at a safe level of service.
If I could just change topics briefly, and again, I don't know who on the team is best to answer this. The neighbors have asked for a formal easement across the property. I saw in the materials that it was advised by. Former police chief Mark Henderson that that formal easement not be granted. But could you speak a little bit about the Tommucicle Institute and for that matter, the Montessori's tolerance of the. Use or potential continued use of the property by the neighbors on an informal basis. To walk their dogs, play at the playground, et cetera.
Yeah, that, as we said from day one, the Tommucicle Institute and Montessori are totally comfortable with the informal use of the, of the property. That's the case at, you know, many public schools as well. But you know, the, they do have some legitimate safety concerns and they cannot grant a formal easement. Because we do have to be able to address, you know, safety needs as and when they come up. I think everybody on this Zoom is aware of the, you know, the environment that we live in these days and the concerns that schools and. And religious institutions, you know, the, the kinds of things that we hear about in the news. So, you know, we have to be able to have the flexibility to. Maintain the safety and security of, you know, we have two schools operating here.
Right. But I'm interested in hearing a little bit maybe from Ms. Gowan as well as to Montessori's. You know, willingness to share the playground, so to speak, or the playing fields.
So we currently do that, Ken. We built a toddler garden on the back of the building that has the shade sails that many of you can see. They're brightly colored. So you can kind of see it even when you're driving down Winton. And that space, we regularly share. There are trucks that are out and toys and. The hose is regularly out. And I, I know that people come and use it in the evenings and on the weekends, because when I come. On Monday mornings or Tuesday mornings, sometimes I have to put all of those things away for them. In the back of the building, there are, is a garden space. Right now, we don't, our gardener, we don't have a gardener. COVID kind of put a kibosh on our gardener, but. When that garden is available, you know, I, I spotted. Children that I know that are friends of, of my children tasting strawberries from the garden, you know, and those are things that we welcome and we're totally fine with. We ask that people don't share those spaces with us during times when our children are on them. So if we are on the, the playground, for instance. We try and, and keep it just with our children, but we are out there for very short periods of the day. So for instance, when you were talking about parks and recreation. And their programs, we regularly shared that space with. Their summer programs. And the neighborhood successfully during those times. But you know, there's shovels and rakes and all sorts of toys and things that are out and about and, and we see neighbors using them regularly.
So if, if I'm a resident of Evans Farm neighborhood, is it fair to say that I should anticipate no change in those policies? Happen as a result of this project?
Unless that depends because of safety concerns, right? So unless I needed to close off areas because I was worried about traffic. I wouldn't, I wouldn't make any changes to our current policy. There would be no reason for me to.
Betsy, you were going to say something there.
Yeah, the idea is really to keep it, you know, friendly and open to the neighborhood. The, the rabbi is on this call. They, you know, they're thrilled to be part of this neighborhood.
Thank you for indulging me. I appreciate it. Thank you, John, for letting me ask my questions.
Jeff Frisch, do you have any questions at this time? Jeff?
Yeah, let me look over. You can check with other people and come back to me. I guess. Matt, I mean, there's a, there's a few questions that. In talking with Everett that we, we want cleared up prior to granting a, a declaration for seeker. A lot of those are outlined in his report. Some of them involve the stormwater, really floodplain mitigation and. Um, some of them involve the stormwater, really floodplain mitigation and where the, where the mitigation is going to be located. And, um, some questions about the, the inlet to the pond and how that will be managed during storm events.
Yeah, Jeff, I, I think the outstanding engineering questions or comments that we, of course, will work through with staff are really tied to the site plan specific to Tommudical, not necessarily, uh, Montessori. So, um, understanding that we also need to go to Architectural Review Board, uh, probably prior to final approval anyway. Uh, we did anticipate another round of, of comments and working with staff to resolve any of those outstanding questions specific to the site plan.
Yeah, and I think, I'm talking with him, like, otherwise, he, he seems to think that we're, we're in decent shape as, as far as that stuff goes. Um, and, um, I don't think we'll be, because of the outstanding comments for seeker, um, we're, we're kind of looking for not doing the approval for the site plan this evening, but I think that in talking with some other staff, there's the potential, um, to combine final and preliminary in the future.
Understood. Thanks.
All right. Thank you, Jeff. Um, this is a public hearing. So if there are any members of the public who wish to address these applications, um, please, now is your opportunity.
And how should they, uh, indicate that they're interested in speaking, John?
I, I, I can't recall how they've done it in the past. They raised their hand and get recognized?
Sure, there is a raised hand feature. If you, uh, look at your box, there's three little dots, uh, at the top right-hand corner of the box with your name in it, you can raise your hand, um, and as, uh, we rec- as we recognize you, we will unmute your microphone, ask you to turn on your camera. Um, state your name and your address, please, um, for the record. And then, uh, we would-
So they move this item to last?
I'm not sure who we have talking over here. Um, so, uh, then, uh, we will put up, um, a timer. And we do ask if you could to try to keep your remarks to three minutes or less, just to give everybody an opportunity. Um, and John, I would have you, I guess, uh, recognize each speaker and then, um, I believe it will be either Brendan or Jeff who will be unmuting, uh, each participant as their turn comes up.
Excellent. Thank you.
Uh, John, if you want me to call their names too, I can, I can do that.
Sure, yeah, because I don't, I don't see anybody yet.
Okay, um, first we'll have Judy Massar.
Okay, Judy, please, uh, restate your name and your, uh, address for the record.
Yeah, my name is Judy Massari. I live at 126 Idlewood Road. And I'd like to start out by correcting some of the numbers that were bounced around today. Um, the number that was quoted was ninety-six cars on school days going to Montessori. And that's lower than what, um, Cindy Gowen's letter of, uh, May twenty-sixth or so said, but I can go with those numbers anyway. So ninety-six cars are going on school days, approximately twenty of those cars are staff. And they go to the school and from the school once a day. So that's forty cars right there. The remaining seventy-six cars are parents and they go down our roads four times a day. They drop the kids off and leave the neighborhood, then they pick up the kids and leave the neighborhood. So that's over three hundred cars on our streets just from Montessori parents, and then add another forty. So you're well over three hundred cars, three hundred and fifty cars using Idlewood Road. Now that is well over seventeen percent of the traffic on our road in the course of a day. But more importantly, those cars are not spread evenly throughout the day. They are concentrated at pickup time and drop-off time. At which point, a lot of those cars are coming in at the same time. If you look at the engineering report or the, um, traffic study that was submitted, um, with the materials this time, you'll see that one of the conclusions is that Idlewood Road has been operating at traffic levels much higher than the road was designed. From the engineer, from the traffic stu- latest traffic study, all we're saying is we don't want that to continue. We want to go back to what it was designed for. And that is a lower traffic count. The only way to do that is to close the Idlewood entrance because it may be that everyone recommends that Brighton Rec use, use Winton Road and everyone recommends that the food pantry uses Winton Road, but unless you've got a traffic cop there asking people as they pull into i- into Brookside where they're going, you're not going to be able to enforce that. Brighton Rec already directs traffic to Winton Road, and I know for a fact that a lot of traffic for Brighton Rec comes through Idlewood because a lot of them are my friends. So as long as the Idlewood Road is open, Idlewood Road entrance is open, everybody who has business at the south, at the east end of the building for the north wing and the south wing are both gonna, are all gonna be going through the Idlewood entrance. Um, and I don't see the timer anywhere, but I assume that I've used up my three minutes, so I'll uh, let one of my neighbors speak.
Very good. Now, thank you very much, Judy.
I just asked the board members, do you see the timer? Does most people see the timer?
Uh, timer is located on the left center of the map that is up showing the magenta road, right at the end of the magenta road, uh, furthest to the west of that road.
Oh, yeah. Got it. Thank you.
And, um, Ms. Raina just commented, nope, no timer. So I, I'm, I'm not sure how your screen is set, set up, Ms. Raina, but it is visible to at least the board members. Oh.
They say they can see it now.
They're saying they can see it now.
Okay, very good.
Okay.
Very good. Thank you though for, uh, letting us know.
All right, um, next will be Aaron Rain.
Can you guys hear me?
Okay, Aaron, Aaron Raina, thank you. If you can, uh, state your address for us.
Yep, Aaron Raina, sixty-two Poplar Way. Uh, I, I want to congratulate you guys. I mean, what a, what an amazingly, uh, well orchestrated sales performance from the legal team. Uh, really, really well put together. I, I want to remind the planning board, and then this is really my intent tonight. You get what you inspect, not what you expect. And I'm going to say that again. You get what you inspect, not what you expect. We can use the green space, but we can't have an easement. So there's no enforcement there. There's no guarantee there. As much as we want to reinforce that with our questions, there is no guarantee of that continuing. And with the security concerns raised by our former police of chief, police chief, can we really rely on that? We can't. Can we rely on traffic being reduced? No, because there's no enforcement there. If the tenants change, they can base that change on prior precedent set with this plan. The same thing happens with the traffic numbers. The same thing happens with everything else. I would also call your attention to where we're going to enter and leave. Prior proposals on this proposal that's still open with the public record, people were coming in Idlewood, then they're coming in Winton, which is it? And it's not just Montessori. They've unfortunately been thrown under the bus with this one and accused of being all of the traffic. There are a lot of it, most of it, probably the vast majority of it. It's not just Montessori. We like Montessori. In fact, I'm glad that you're a neighbor in Brighton. But when it comes down to it, I personally, on behalf of the neighborhood, have been in communication with the current police chief and the past police chief. And they've done road monitoring for the last, uh, let's call it five years at least, since I've been talking to them about speeds and concerns and traffic on Idlewood. This isn't unique to this application and we need to stop pretending it is. Again, I, I just want to look at this and figure out how we're going to do it. We look at safety on the property. We've heard people talk all night. It's not safe for the kids to have to cross a fifteen mile an hour access road to a parking lot, but somehow it's safe for my neighbors, myself, my dogs, my kid to ride their bikes during traffic patterns that are admittedly very high in a neighborhood where the roads were not designed for that. Whatever decision you make as a planning board needs to take into consideration future planning for this property and the precedent that is going to be set. We're just asking for that consideration to be made and for that entrance to be closed. The rest of it, hey, you know, it's in your hands, but you're setting precedent and we are asking for your attention as the homeowners, not a private entity with temporary tenants. Thank you.
Thank you, Aaron. Much appreciated. Um, okay, do we have another speaker?
Next we'll have Howard. Howard, are you there?
Yes, I'm here. It's, uh, my name is Debbie Abrahams and I live at one five zero South Wood Lane. Uh, I've been very concerned about this because what I see is that the neighborhood is going to be losing a lot and gaining nothing in return with this plan. Uh, I'm accustomed to taking my bicycle through from Idlewood to Winton and, uh, it's the safest way I know to get to Winton because otherwise I would have to exit Evans Farm and go along Westfall Road and make the left turn onto Winton from Westfall Road, which is a fairly busy intersection. Um, so I would like more assurances that there will be some kind of permanent easement that would allow neighbors to, um, move from Idlewood over to Winton Road through the property. That's my main concern. And the only other concern I have is something that was mentioned previously about, um, street lighting. Having to add more lighting, parking lot lighting or whatever would contribute greatly to the light pollution that is, um, an annoyance to the neighbors and a, uh, ecological danger to, um, nocturnal creatures such as fireflies, and that is another concern of mine. So that's pretty much everything I have to say, but I am concerned that we not lose the right to cross this property as we have enjoyed for so many years. I, I've been living here for over thirty years now. And I would hate to see that, um, ability to cross the property taken away. So that's it. That's what I have to say.
Okay, thank you very much, Debbie. Appreciate it. Okay, next speaker.
Um, next will be Peg Warwick.
Sorry, I had muted myself. It wasn't you. Sorry about that. This is Peg Warwick. I live on Idlewood right across from the school. Have a couple of key points. Um, Betsy Bog, among other people, have mentioned the traffic's always been there. That's because we've had no ability to have any impact because it was public land and we could not get that changed. They had the right to do that. Since this land is now changing hands and going to be in private hands, I think it's time to bring Idlewood back to a safe pedestrian, walkable and bicyctable street bicycle. Well, I don't know if that's a word. Anyway, um, Cindy talked about the south side of the road wiping out the green space. My understanding of the current proposal is that the, the half of that from the Winton side is going to be in there as a service road anyway to the paved area and it will already go around the gardens with the, the playground that's got the blueberry bushes. And that's what those are. And so that amount of green space will already be changed. So we're only asking for the second half of that road to go across. Since most of that traffic is pickup and drop-off traffic, when I, I walk my dog over there a lot, when I've been over there, I have not seen children trying to go to playground during those hours. I assume that they're all going in the classrooms and getting checked in. So I can understand some concern for children, but I have a hard time thinking it's significant. Uh, regarding Ken Gordon's questions about the kids coming out of Brighton Rec on the north side of the building, they rarely play in that south side, especially in the future, since that's where the floodplain retention pond is proposed. There, the fields are much more established with nets and what have you on the south, I'm sorry, I'm getting north and south confused. There are, there, if, when they come out of the north side, they don't usually play on the north side. They're always playing in the much bigger, drier field on the south side. So I actually am concerned as Ken started his discussion about the kids coming out that north door, but working their way to the south side away from the pond and to the bigger fields. Um, I had one more. Shoot, twenty, oh, it was the same thing about the twenty to seventeen percent. I don't understand how the overall Idlewood traffic could be so high that the two hundred plus count that Judy mentioned could possibly be seventeen percent. Um, I think that's it. Oh, and reducing traffic, definitely appreciate them moving around the others. People that are used to going in this side may continue. And per Judy's traffic count in the busy part of the morning, that was a couple percent of the cars. So that doesn't address our issue. Thank you very much. That's all I have.
All right. Thank you, Peg. Appreciate your comments.
Uh, next up is Vicki Raina.
Hi, I'm Vicki Raina. I live at sixty-two Poplar Way. I, um, first want to say that I agree with many of the previous points brought up with many of my neighbors. Um, but what particularly strikes me is this comment that it does not matter that, that it's always been this way. We've been doing this way for twenty years or more. The school was designed. Um, I think that that's a, a really, um, I guess, bad, I can't, I don't know what word to use, bad approach to thinking about the evolution of changes to our environment and our community at large. If we have had concerns, like Aaron said, about the entrance and traffic, it's not new. This is a prime opportunity, much like Peg said, to address the issue. If we really thought about twenty years ago, it's when we thought Pluto was a planet. We didn't use the internet the way that we use it now. Things change. We evolve and we learn, and now we have an opportunity to make it different. I also am suspect about the data that has been interpreted. Um, however, I want to note that even if it's seventeen percent of an increase on a daily basis to our neighborhood, that is a significant for pedestrian streets. And further, I did have a question is about future tenants and having to get a conditional permit and wondering if that is relevant to if it's, um, another property or organization owned by Tooney. Um, so if something that they own were to move in and they are already property owners, would they need a conditional use permit? Um, and I think that I want to reiterate that it felt, um, on this end from listening to the speakers tonight, that there's some great consideration about the students of MSR and those that might use Brighton Rec. But again, not, um, really getting the feeling or the intent is to protect the children and the people of the neighborhood that you, um, propose to continue to drive through every day. Um, Montessori and Brighton Rec are transient users. They're not going to use this neighborhood, um, in a way like they are, um, taxpaying residents of the, the location. Um, I feel like I could go on and on, but I'm going to leave it there. I hope that the planning board, uh, truly gives some consideration to the many concerns expressed by the residents of this neighborhood. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Vicki. Do we, do we have a, another speaker?
Yep, next will be Sharon.
Hi, my name is Sharon Dickman. I live at, uh, two Birmingham Drive. Um, I just wanted to make a brief comment about, uh, Mr. Gordon's, uh, talk on the, um, the whole issue of the space, uh, very close to the, uh, children's school. And also Cynthia, you know, Gowen talked about seeing, um, neighbors walking through and, and what a good feeling she gets and the neighbors get of using that space and having access to that space. And she kind of, I think, gave the impression that that's just going to go on indefinitely. But we know through Mr. Gordon and other people that, um, there's no way that we can guarantee that. Um, and, you know, it's just has to be that, that can't be a promised situation and, uh, the changes would, could happen at any time and it's very informal because it can't be formal. So I think that says a lot of, you know, problems for the community and things we have to give up. And, um, Cynthia's right, it is a great thing that's been going on. I was one of the people who collected signatures uh, about a year ago when, um, the school district decided- uh about a year ago when um the school district decided to sell this piece of property. And the superintendent gave us less than a month to go around and hurry up and get sixteen hundred signatures. And then maybe he'd have a meeting to tell us what was really going on. And it turned out we never could raise the sixteen hundred because we didn't have enough time to do it. So just so you have an understanding that the people who you're hearing from tonight and earlier. You know, have really not had a chance to, to what? To express what's really going on and nobody seems to really be listening. And it is very frustrating and they've been left out a lot as I've been left out a lot. Um, so please keep that in mind. I hope the planning board obviously especially will keep those things in mind and try to to help us um get some kind of a, a fair arrangement. So the people especially, and not just especially those who live closest to um Brookside, but also the rest of us, you know, there are more than two hundred homes around here, beautiful homes. One was just purchased for five hundred thousand dollars and it's not a mansion. So you can imagine that this is a nice neighborhood and we really want to keep it that way. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much, Sharon. Appreciate it. Um, do we have another speaker?
Hi, I'm Casey Sacco. I live at twenty Dark for Growth. Um, just wanted to follow up with all my neighbors. I think you, you've heard from all of us. You know our concerns. And I think, you know, one of the things that has become very apparent is you know, you're hearing from, I don't know, fifty, at least fifty households of our concerns. And then all we hear from are lawyers and I find it very ironic that the town representatives for town rep, for the lawyers, for Tooney. Everyone's very concerned. I think the magenta road is a great solution. And the concern is that some kids during the summer months with a camp counselor might have to cross a road. A road that you're saying is only going to be used at certain times of the day. So you've got a very large concern about this one little access road. Where you're asking us as a neighborhood to deal with this traffic all the time in our own homes. We have kids, we have dogs, we have neighbors that we are walking with and talking. And you've got two residences right next to this same access road from our neighborhood. Who have kids and have yards that are right adjacent to it. So if you're concerned about some summer camp, having to cross this road, one, you know, one day for the summer months. I think that's ridiculous that you're not now concerned about what we're concerned with. Um, I had the same question that Vicki asked about the future use. Um, I do have, you know, I have concerns that eventually Montessori might not be a tenant. And then when that, when they are not a tenant, what happens when Tooney decides to expand their own school in that space? Are they going to be required to come back for approvals? Because we know they have an elementary school. Buses would be required and now you're opening up our neighborhood to potentially another type of school having buses coming through our neighborhood and increasing traffic, which would be even worse than parents. And then my last thing is just, I want you to remember that we're residents. We live here. These are, this is our home. We pay the taxes. Tooney is tax exempt. This town is not getting any benefit out of them purchasing this property. And then they're making money. They are profiting off of their tenants. So why are we as taxpayers fighting so hard to protect our property and our beautiful neighborhood? When this entity is not contributing to the town and they're making money off of these tenants. So all of the use for this property should all come from Winton Road. It is now a for-profit entity. They're making money and they are not going to be putting any money back into our tax roll. So please, as the board and as the town, your job is to listen to us, respect us and to protect us. Because we are the ones who are paying for this. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much, Casey. Uh, do we have another speaker? Seth Holmes just came up. Seth, can you tell us uh where you, where you live?
Yeah, I am Seth Holmes at one eighty-two Idlewood Road. I want to second, most of what my neighbors just said, particularly what Casey was just saying right ahead of me. And you know, just to sort of piggyback off of that. Uh, there has been a lot of, I'm hearing a lot tonight about the safety of children walking around the building in relation to the cars moving around the same building. Uh, I want to point out to Ken Gordon's comments earlier. Uh, there are, there is an eastern doorway out of that north wing where um the Brighton Parks and Rec will go. Students or children during the summer could walk out of that east doorway, walk on a sidewalk that already exists around the loop down to the playground, never crossing a driveway. So that's entirely possible and guided by counselors as Casey just mentioned. We don't have that. It hasn't really been mentioned, just inferred to that we do not have sidewalks on Idlewood Road or in our entire neighborhood. So we all walk on the road as we've all said before many times. So if we're concerned about the safety of kids walking around roads, we do it all day long. And well, in the mornings, particularly when kids are walking on the bus in our neighborhood. Uh, I want the board to, to push a little harder on the traffic study. There was some comments that we made about the actual width of Idlewood Road. The comments in the traffic study say it's twenty-four feet wide. It's been measured by many of us as nineteen feet of asphalt with two thirty foot or thirty inch concrete gutters on either side of it. Driving down the middle of that road, it does not look like a twenty-four foot wide road. It looks like a nineteen foot wide road with at best some shoulders on the side of it. Uh, I, it's hard for me to imagine someone calling that a twenty-four foot wide road. Yes, there is twenty-four foot of material there, but the contrast of the different types of material, concrete to asphalt, the fact that they settle different. It's not a twenty-four foot wide road. I am hard pressed to see that that is, can be considered a minor collector, as has been mentioned by the traffic study. Uh, I, you know, we're talking about pedestrian access on this road without sidewalks. There was no mention of that in the traffic study. Are we doing a comprehensive traffic study or just analyzing cars? How about the actual use of the road? The fact that people walk in it, people bike in it? That wasn't ever mentioned. This, the board has to take this into consideration. Um, you know, I, I would hope that the board, you know, the town has its own engineer. Can they study the road and come to some conclusion as to whether it's a minor collector or not? Uh, for pushing this much traffic out, which the, the traffic study says is a minor collector amount of traffic. You know, I, I question whether if the town was going to build a new minor collector roadway. Would they build it the way Idlewood is currently designed without sidewalks with a nineteen feet of asphalt and thirty inch gutters on either side? I really hope the board pushes a little harder on all of these aspects that come out of this uh study and presentation. Thanks.
All right. Thank you very much, Seth. Appreciate your comments. Do we have a next speaker?
I believe that's me. Um, I'm Audrey Schrader. I live at one hundred ninety Idlewood Road. Um, and I'm not going to speak as eloquently as Seth and Casey and my other neighbors, but I wholeheartedly agree with all of the points that they've made. We've had a lot of discussions together and I've been part of the group of neighbors that has submitted multiple letters to the board. Um, providing a lot of details. Um, I feel um that there are a lot of challenges that have been presented, but I don't feel that any of them are insurmountable. And I feel that that magenta um road that, that's on the diagram is more than reasonable. Um, I feel that a lot of accommodations have been made for the tenants and a lot of other parties, but not for the direct neighbors that are here permanently. Um, and I'm extremely concerned about the traffic. Um, in one of the letters that um me and some of the other neighbors submitted last month to the planning board. Um, there was some additional traffic study data, one of which I took. I met again at one ninety Idlewood Road on two doors down from the Idlewood entrance to the property. Um, and my children again walk to and from the bus stop in the, during the peak um traffic hours of parents going into and out of that property. Um, and on May, in the morning of May twenty-fifth, the Wednesday, typical day from seven forty-five AM to nine o'clock AM. Of all the cars that pass back and forth in front of my house, sixty-five percent of the cars passing back and forth were related to the property. And I just, I just feel that's ridiculous. Again, I, I um, again, I'm still not clear as to how the seventeen percent um overall traffic was count, that figure was calculated. Um, even if that is accurate, I agree that that is quite significant. But I, that also is not reflecting these um peak traffic hours. And I'm just citing the morning traffic hours too. There are waves of um of peak traffic hours in the afternoon and early evening as well. So I'm just, I I'm feeling really frustrated that we've again and again for months been sharing, I think, some very reasonable concerns. We're neighbors here. We plan to stay here permanently. Um, and I, I truly hope that the Idlewood entrance to the property can be closed off. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much, Audrey. Appreciate your comments. Okay, next speaker.
Hi, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Everyone hear me? Okay. Um, my name is Heather Beach and I live at two hundred Idlewood, which is the property that is uh directly adjacent to the road, the access road. I don't necessarily have anything, you know, specific with traffic studies or anything else to add. It's more of a, I, I would just like to appeal to um the board's uh just sense of, I, I don't know, for lack of a better term, just please, like just doing the right thing for the neighbors and the taxpayers of this town. We, we, um, I have, every, everything that my other neighbors have said, I, I completely agree with and I just it's very difficult for me to listen to all of the talk of campers' uh safety and Montessori student safety, which obviously is very important as a, as a parent. I understand that completely. Um, but our children's safety and quality of life is, is what my, you know, is just as much of a concern, if not more in my opinion. And I just feel like that's not being heard um or taken into consideration. Um, we as a, as a neighborhood have, are already losing a lot with the sale of this um space. We're losing green space, which is incredibly important to not only my family, but our neighborhood. Um, I see that the timer's not going, so I don't know what happened there, but um we're losing a lot of green space. And again, they say that we can use it, but I without any formal agreements, we don't believe that that's really going to be true. So um, it's just the traffic, the safety of our children is just as important as the safety of the people that are using the space temporarily. We live here. We are here all the time permanently. And it's, it's just very important to us that you please um take what we are saying to heart. That, that's all I have to say about that. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much, Heather. Appreciate your comments. Okay, do we have another speaker?
Sir, I see you raising your hand. You can go ahead and speak. Gabby and Sam, this is my name on the computer.
Hi.
Hi, go ahead.
I'm, I'm, I'm Sam Rand. I live on Evandale Road. Uh, I'm a walker. Uh, one of my uh places that I like to walk through is I go through Brookside uh to the back recreation center across the bridge and go wind up on Winton. Winton Sound and depends on the day. Sometimes I'll take a left, meaning I'm going south on Winton against the traffic and I'll stop at the traffic light where all the professional builders and the colleges are across the street and start walking against the traffic the other way. Uh, all the way past uh, up to Westfall, past the ambulance place. And with the light, I crossed the other way and I go to the side where we supposedly have a sidewalk. But it's more like a half a sidewalk and pretty damn close to the street. So it's kind of dangerous. That sidewalk goes all the way to Roosevelt uh towards Allen's Creek. Uh, which is a challenge by itself, but then the biggest challenge is try to cross the street to the other side where there's no sidewalk. Uh, drivers most of the time will not stop. Once in a while you find an angel and they stop. Now, the reason I'm saying this is because I was basically shocked to read the recommendation of ex-chief Henderson who said it's safer for us to walk on the sidewalks on Westfall Road. Where are the sidewalks? I'm very surprised about that. It's much safer walking inside the Evans Farm. And like people said, we have a lot of kids walking there. And everybody that is watching me knows very well that kids are not as careful as adults. Uh, none of us were. So that's basically what I wanted to say. We talk about safety. Our safety in Evans Farm track is inside the track. And if Idlewood gets busy, it affects everybody, not just the people on Idlewood. Uh, and, and sometimes I've watched and talked to a couple of my neighbors. As a matter of course, the street, Mr. Ray Warwick will always talk about people not stopping at the stop sign, people going right through it. So let's consider all that. Safety is the most important thing. And for us, safety is inside the track, not outside. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you very much, Sam.
Um, next will be Alan.
Hello? Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, I'm not sure if I'm actually got my camera on or not. Uh, my name is Alan Luster. I reside at one forty-four Glen Hill Drive in Evans Farm neighborhood. Uh, I don't want to spend a lot of time rehashing all the things I agree with, with, with what many of my neighbors have said. I just want to point out a few things that I've noticed as I've looked through the documents and listened to the conversation. Uh, one of them is the letter from Mark Henderson uh from the Jewish Federation of Greater Rochester. In his capacity as director of Jewish community ser- uh security. He did talk about a safety concern or security concern uh relative to the residential school property. And as a Jewish person, I do share his concern about the potential uh for targeted antisemitic actions that could potentially happen. And I think that by closing off the entrance at the east side of the property at the Idlewood entrance uh would allow them to manage security on the property better. Uh, I also want to point out um the discussion about the traffic and the amount of traffic uh going through between Evans Lane and the Idlewood entrance. Uh, the neighborhood itself, besides those peak times, is an extremely walkable neighborhood. And it's a very much a pleasure to live here uh because of that. And I think we want to be able to continue that part of the process. And I'm looking at the time, making sure I am uh cognizant of that. Um, also, when I was looking through the reply from um Marathon Engineering to the questions, I did not, it's such a very thick and very doc- detailed document. I did not see anything in there that talked about restricting, actually to explicitly restriction, restricting any kind of construction traffic away from the Idlewood entrance. And there's nothing that I can see that actually specifies that specifically. So I, I think that's very much uh something I think that needs to be clearly laid out if the project gets approved. Uh, I also am aware that the town of Brighton tomorrow is having some kind of a meeting relative to a new potential um recreation center or something. And how will that affect Parks and Rec in terms of the Brighton uh Recreation Department? In terms of where they're located and how long will they actually be a tenant of the facility? Uh, I just wanted to bring up those few points. Um, like I said, I agree with what Erin was saying and many of my other neighbors were saying, Peg Warwick, et cetera. And I also want to thank the planning board uh for uh the work that they do because it is a very difficult job you guys have. It's kind of thankless. And I do appreciate your, your, your attention and effort. And it's very obvious from the questions that you're raising about the project that uh you take your job seriously. So thank you very And it's very obvious from the questions that you're raising about the project that, uh, you take your job seriously. So thank you very much for your service.
All right. Thank you very much, Alan. Appreciate your comments.
Next we have Elise.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yep.
Hi, um, my name is Elise Condor. I'm at 50 Poplar Way. I'm sorry, I'm feeding my baby. I, um, just wanted to voice my support of my neighbors, uh, all their comments about safety and security inside the neighborhood for our very, um, you know, positive and a very pedestrian forward, uh, environment here. I also completely agree with the concern that our children, the children growing up inside the neighborhood need to be, um, considered. When we're talking about safety and security, this is bidirectional for sure. Um, and the neighborhood and, uh, permanent residents should not bear the burden of, um, convenience or, or, um, as, as my other neighbors have said, I, I also support the magenta driveway consideration. I also agree with, um, growing up in a different upstate New York location. I had to cross a, uh, fifteen mile an hour road, uh, at my elementary school to get to my, uh, green space and that was never a safety concern for us, um, because we were accessing the green space when the, when the road wasn't in use essentially. Um, and there are ways to block off the road to make sure it's not in use when children are outside. And I also support the statements about needing formal securing of a pedestrian easement. Because, uh, with the changing of who is in this, uh, building space, every, everything just can't be, continue to be informal. Um, so that's about it. And I thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you very much, Elise. Appreciate your comments.
Next we have Vince Hope.
Yes, hi. Vince Hope, I'm at 30 Poplar Way. I just want to again thank the board for everything that you're putting into this effort and John, your, uh, idea of shortening the magenta roadway, uh, certainly would be a feasible way to, um, modify the plan. Uh, matter of fact, you could put in a, uh, continuance of that roadway along the north side of the parking lot and change the configuration inside the parking to make that a continuous road, um, all the way out to Wynton probably. I'm very curious, not being an engineer. It didn't come across to me that it's unfeasible to put in the magenta roadway from a conservation or environmental concern. There's cost involved, but it didn't seem like an impossibility. And I want to support the idea that this is potentially a very modest investment by the new owner toward this, as you, you put at the very, very beginning here, the, the goodwill with the neighborhood. I wish the whole project had not started in secret. That didn't help our reaction in the neighborhood. And it would be great if the tenant found a way to mitigate the issues, um, by coming back with reasonable planned alterations rather than constantly saying they can't do things. I appreciate the time. I appreciate the board's work. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much, Vince. Appreciate your comments.
John, at this point, I don't, I don't see anybody else with their hand raised. If there's anybody else that wants to speak, please raise your hand or you can turn your camera on and wave and we'll. It's like, it was like a John.
Okay, great. All right. Thank you. That, that ends the, uh, public hearing session of our planning board meeting.
Is there any questions that the board members would have for the applicants? To clarify anything that they heard from the residents?
Yeah, I don't have any additional, uh, questions.
Hi. Can you hear me? Just give me one second here. My battery is suddenly here.
Um, hold on, there's, uh, John, there's one more person, um, that's raising his hand.
All right, the public hearing is not closed. Thanks, Jeff.
Yep. Can I just ask you unmute? I'm engaged.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yep.
I couldn't unmute myself. Uh, yeah, I'd like to add my support to.
Okay, wait, what's your name and where do you live?
My name is Michael Gage and I'm at 29 Idlewood Road. And I've been here for twenty-eight years about. I'd like to add my support to what people have already said. In particular, I'm very suspicious about the seventeen percent uh, traffic increase. Uh, it sounds like they divided the by the total amount of traffic during the day. It's, uh, someone said it was very much concentrated in the morning and in the afternoon. And those are also the times when Brighton buses are out and people are picking up, uh, they're picking up the, hello?
Oh, go ahead.
Uh, and, and, uh, the buses are picking up students from those streets. So, uh, the fact that the traffic is high at those times and also does actually coincide with times when even some of the people who live in the neighborhood are going to work. It's not the average amount of traffic. If you include the nighttime, it's going to be very low. But, uh, if you look at those hours, it's going to be quite high. I also agree with some of the other, uh, points that they made about crossing green space and so on, but I think I find that the traffic problem is the most important one for you guys to address. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much, Michael. Appreciate your comments.
Let me, let me look. I'm not, I'm not seeing anybody else at this moment, John.
Okay, is there, uh, anybody else who wishes to speak from the board or from the, uh, developer, developers team?
I think I'd like to take a couple of minutes just to respond. There's been, uh, there we go. Okay. Yeah, I'd like to just take a couple of minutes to respond and just add a couple of things. Um, I totally understand where people are at, where they're talking about, you know, they want a guarantee of a, a public easement. But you just step back and think about it. Think about any other school. Um, I know that this is an issue that, uh, the school district has had, I believe with Council Rock not too long ago, and, and maybe Ken might know more about that than I do. I grew up on Rockless Drive. I learned how to ride my bike at Our Lady of Lourdes. Um, but you know, there is a relationship between these institutions, between the schools and churches in our community. They're there to be friendly with the community, but there are other factors and considerations that have to be balanced. And I don't think you'll find that anyone um, provides, uh, a public easement. And again, perhaps Ken is aware of something that I might not be aware of, but to my knowledge, you know, what we're proposing here is very much consistent with what you'd get from any public school. Um, and then something the board may just need to be reminded of or may, might be beneficial to know is, you know, we're here for a conditional use permit. It is a use that is essentially permitted and you know, deemed legislatively, legally to be consistent with the neighborhood. The reason it needs a conditional use permit is to look at whether we are generating any additional adverse impacts, which we are, we are not. And I totally appreciate that everybody is concerned with every single car that comes through the neighborhood. But by definition, schools and churches carry an even higher, more favorable legal presumption um, as being, of being consistent with the neighborhood than, uh, you know, any other typical, uh, you know, special permit, conditional permit use. They are deemed to be beneficial to neighborhoods. So I know that every car is an issue. Um, you know, I wish there, there, I know there's people in the neighborhood that I personally know who are just too intimidated by the, the fact that people are speaking out against this to, to voice their own concerns. But I do hear about people talking about, and we talked at the last meeting about the fact that um, the neighborhood doesn't have sidewalks, but it, but there's a, a split. Some people want sidewalks, some people don't. There was conversation about not having a garbage district and how many garbage trucks come through the neighborhood. So I think there's a lot of other issues at play. It's just easy to come after the one issue that's on the table. So I know that a lot of people spoke from throughout the neighborhood, but again, I would direct you to the traffic report. And again, David Cruzy can speak to this. The traffic that comes out of the Montessori school isn't traveling the entire neighborhood. It is going out. I believe it's passing, and David, you can correct me. Primarily twenty-two houses, am I right? And again, I totally censor the fact that every single car is an issue, but I think everybody kind of hones in on this as if it is the cause of the traffic in the neighborhood, and it is, it is not. And the project is actually reducing the amount of traffic. But it is not an inappropriate amount of traffic that's coming out of the school, um, from Montessori. It's, um, you know, it's been looked at professionally and I, and I understand people get very emotional about the neighborhood. But the neighborhood, um, that, you know, it is, it is a safe amount of traffic. The, uh, the road can support the traffic. This has been looked at professionally. I, I think I'm going to let, you know, David speak to that a little bit.
This is. I'm sorry for interrupting, uh, but, um, I did want to, just point out the fact that we typically don't have applicants respond because then we get to this back and forth. Um, we did afford you some latitude here to respond. Um, I think it would be fair if you tried to wrap up your comments, if you've gone over the three minutes that we have been allowing during this portion of the public hearing. Um, I have seen comments already from some of the residents, uh, John, asking if they would also be given some additional time now uh, as well. Um, so I want to avoid this back and forth.
Okay, I appreciate that. I'm sorry.
You have, to the extent that you have new information that has not yet been put in the record. I think the board is happy to hear it, uh, but other than that, I think it's time.
I think what I'll, I'll just close and say that, um, there were some questions about some of the numbers and the information. We would be more than happy to drill down on that and provide any clarification or additional information that might be helpful to the board. You know, if there are any questions or anything you want us to submit, we'd be happy to do that.
All right. Thank you, Betsy. And I would like to ask if there are anybody out there that has any specific detailed questions regarding anything in the, uh, traffic studies that you haven't addressed already. If you do, you know, do a further analysis of it, please submit those in writing to Jeff Frisch so we can make sure they're, uh, considered, entered into the record and, uh, and looked at.
Well, the, the time for those comments, um, I'm sorry, John, but the time for those comments is now during the public hearing. This board has on its agenda today, uh, the, um, conditional use permit for the Montessori School, which is the project which is mostly, um, generating the traffic on the Idlewood side. Um, and so, um, I would ask, uh, you, John, as chair or acting chair, if you would afford the opportunity to, um, residents, if they feel that they have new material that has not already been mentioned, uh, that they would like the board to hear to bring it up at this time. And give those folks, even if they've spoken already, um, an opportunity to raise their hand and have another three minutes, but, but please, folks, please don't abuse this, uh, opportunity by simply repeating what you've already said. I see now four hands going up. I'm, I'm really hoping, folks, that you're not going to repeat what you've already said because I will ask the chair to cut you off if that's what you're doing.
All right. Thanks, Ken. So I'll open the, uh, open the floor up to anybody that has any, who's already spoken that may have additional comments, new information that they wish to provide. Thank you.
All right. I'm just going to go in order that I see them. Vince Hope. Please unmute yourself. We can hear you. Vince? You're, Vince, you're muted. Can you unmute?
Thank you. Vince Hope, 30 Poplar Way again. I just want to point out that it's not the houses along Idlewood. All members of Evans Farm walk on Idlewood at all times of day. And a matter of fact, for decades, our neighborhood has attracted walkers from across Edgewood and other neighborhoods, uh, across Westfall from Linwood. We see walkers with their dogs all the time coming in because we have a big circle. And it's a, it invites people to be here, walking for their health and every, every other reason. We can't just count houses along this one strip of roadway from Idlewood to Evans Lane. Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Vince. Appreciate your comments.
Um, next is Peg Gork.
I would like to request that the board can.
Thanks, I'm.
Sorry if that I did. I would like to request that if the board chooses to approve Montessori's conditional use, make it only until the time that construction is complete so that we can, that doesn't set a precedent for the TUNIA application and that we can continue to discuss the long-term situation because I understand that Montessori can't practically switch to the north side now and during construction or to the Wynton roadside. Thank you.
Good point.
Thank you, Peg. Appreciate your comments.
Oh shoot, I just did a hands up thing with my.
Next is Seth Holmes.
Uh, hi, thanks for the second chance. I just want to make a quick point about the week of June twentieth through twenty-fourth, uh, I believe the Montessori School was closed and the Brighton School was still in session and it was quite nice waiting with kids at bus stops because there was very little traffic in our neighborhood that week. So that might be another thing worth collecting actual data on. Uh, but I know talking to other parents, we all agree that that was quite a pleasant week waiting at bus stops. Thanks.
Thank you, Seth. Appreciate your comments.
Next is Aaron.
I, I'm just going to say what I said in the chat for the benefit of the planning board members and anybody who may not be watching it. But unsubstantiated claims, uh, in this should have no place. Uh, whether or not we want a garbage district is totally irrelevant tonight and, and I'm really sad that that even came up. I, I, I know the planning board is more intelligent than that, but for the rest of our neighbors that are listening, um, it has no place tonight. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Aaron.
Next is Alan.
Yes, I just have one question relative to the property and the addresses. I know the official address is sixteen sixty-six South Wynton Road. Uh, that's the property that the, uh, that the TUNIA is purchasing. What are the addresses for the tenants and should they be changed to reflect sixteen sixty-six South Wynton Road as opposed to an Idlewood address? And it was strictly a question I'm asking. Um, and I just want to put that out for a thought discussion for the board at a different time. It doesn't have to be talked about further from here. So, thank you. That's, that's it. I just want to bring that part up. That was it.
Thank you, Alan.
You're welcome.
Next will be Judy.
Um, I have just a quick comment. This is Judy Misery, one twenty-six Idlewood Road. And that is, uh, there was an implication in what the lawyer was saying that there are residents of Evans Farm who, who disagree with what we're saying tonight, and that it may well be the case. But over two hundred and seventy of them signed a petition back in May asking that Idlewood Road be closed. So it's not a hundred percent of the neighborhood, but it is quite a few number, uh, quite a large number of neighbors who want it closed. And it's not just people living in the twenty-two houses along Idlewood Road. Thank you.
Thank you, Judy.
Next, I'll go to, um, Gage.
I put this in the chat, but I'll just read it quickly. Um, yeah, I'd also like to, the, the idea that we can contest this, uh, if the tenants change, that we'd be able to check, contest the conditional use property. In some sense, the conditional use, tenants did change maybe twenty years ago when Brighton stopped using the, the facility. And the traffic pattern changed from a few dozen school buses. And the traffic pattern changed from a few dozen school buses, which was pretty handleable. You could handle that pretty easily on that road to ninety-four parents dropping off students. So it's not like this traffic problem is brand new. There, the, the implication was that the Montessori school had been there for a long time and there had been no problems. But in fact, the complaints are. Sort of voice have been there for at least those twenty years. They just haven't had a chance to voice them. And this is our first chance to bring this to the attention of the board.
Okay, thank you, Michael.
Next is Elise.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yep.
All right, I'm Elise Condor, fifty popular way. I, my comment is also more of a question. I feel confused since the Montessori and the Tooney. Permits are, were kind of presented and talked about together. We've talked a lot about the traffic for Montessori School. I'm actually a bit concerned about the other, um, schools' traffic. I know that there are going to be some dorm residents, but there are also commuters and. Just, I, I didn't see where there was any. Evidence and maybe somebody can point me to where they kind of account for how. That school, um, uh, traffic might be because I'm just thinking adults living there, they're going to be. Utilizing the roads, the neighborhood. Possibly before and after school hours and, and then in the after hours to do. Living errands and, and all of that. And then if the school were to grow, et cetera, et cetera. So I just don't, I'm not hearing where that is and, and again, please point me to the materials. That I could read to, um, answer that general question. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Elise. Appreciate your comments, um. There's, there's been submitted material that shows, uh, proposed site plans that covers, uh. Covers the Telmedic Institute's proposed access and, and building layouts.
I'm not seeing anybody else, John.
Okay. All right, well, um. Take this opportunity to close the public hearing for tonight. And. Move along to our next item on the agenda. Thank you, Jeff. And if you can bring, uh, bring Bill back.
He's back.
I'm back. Okay.
This is the court where I need a little break.
Okay.
Just like five minutes.
It's, uh, ten oh two. Let's reconvene at ten oh seven. Thank you. Okay, how are we doing, everybody?
Great.
All right.
I'm back.
How are you all set?
Yep, thank you.
All right. Is the full board back?
I believe so.
Do we have Jeff? Jeff, you there yet?
Can you hear me?
Now we can.
Can you hear me? I just can't see you. What happened to your camera, Jeff?
I don't know. I might, I might have to. Leave and come back real quick.
Uh, you, you don't have to be on camera. It's nice to see your face, but that's okay.
I appreciate it. I like.
You can proceed.
All right. Okay, so our, our public hearings for the evening are, are over. Uh, we do have one application for concept review. We will, uh, hear that now. And, uh, thank the applicant for their patience. That would be application seven PNB one twenty-two, the application of Kim Riley, I'm sorry, Kim Bailey. Stall Properties, uh, as owner for concept review to raise an existing single family. Home and construct a forty-four hundred square foot, single family home. With a nine hundred square foot attached garage on property located at twelve Elmwood Hill Lane. Is somebody here representing Kim or Kim herself? And I don't mean to assume Kim is the, her.
Kim was on and Larry Heinegger was on.
I think, uh, let's see, did I do this right?
We see you.
Hello.
Good evening.
Hi there. Um, yes, I guess we are the last ones here tonight. Yeah, my name's Kim Bailey and, um, I'm the owner, our company Stall Property of, um, twelve Elmwood Hills. And we've owned it now for about six months, sort of contemplating, um. What we wanted to do with the property ultimately, um, after working a bit with, um, Chuck Smith, who's also here tonight from Design Works. As an architect, as our architect and Larry Henninger, who has been working with us and on projects before as our, um, site engineer. So I will just give you the quick, um, down and dirty of what we're looking to do and they can probably fill you in, especially Larry. On a little bit more information pertaining to the, um. Plant, more important to the planning board. So after reviewing the property for quite some time and I had an email with, um, Mary Jo at the town, I can't remember her name. To sort of, uh, familiarize myself with the area a little bit and, um. Sort of the historical significance of that road as well as the house. So we learned it was built in nineteen forty-eight and, um. Doesn't seem, we can talk about it, but doesn't seem to have a lot of historical significance. We initially thought about doing some renovations and the further we got along. The, the vision that we have, it was very difficult to meet with the existing structure. We've been builders in this area, my family for, um. For many years and the vision we see at the top of that hill. We had a difficult time meeting with this house. So the basic structure built in nineteen forty-eight. It was sort of just a, a squared off hip roof. Brick house. There were numerous additions put on over the years, one major one in the, um, eighties that. Sort of added, uh, uh, an entirely different flavor, I guess you would call it more popular, somewhat contemporary eighty style to, um. To the house and then a few more additions and. A lot of it just became, um, really hard to work with and the vision that we have is, um, more of a, a traditional, um. Colonial brick style house that somewhat complements the, the neighbor at the, um. Looking out on the back on the golf course to the, to the left and, um. When we began discussing this with, um. Larry a, as well as Chuck. We thought, we initially thought about taking it just down to the foundation. Once we got to that point, um, and there wasn't much left. We started looking at, um, some of the setbacks and it's an odd shaped lot, which, um. Was, you know, bringing zoning into effect and I think Chuck can probably elaborate on that, on that a bit. But we were, I think, I think by, um, taking down the whole structure. We, um, optimized some of, uh, we, we actually went to, um, a conservation meeting last week. And some of the options that we had for energy efficiency as well as positioning and setbacks to, um. Cut down on the number of variances. We decided to go, um, this route. So I know this is just the, uh, concept, conceptual meeting and we're prepared for the more formal meeting with some more renderings. But, uh, given that we are in the planning board stages, I'd like to, uh, turn it over. I, I believe to Chuck, Chuck has, would like to introduce himself first and then we can, um, see what Larry has to say about some of the site work there.
Hey, great, Kim. Thank you. Uh, this is Chuck Smith from Design Works Architecture. And, um. I, I've had many, uh, many experiences with, uh, older homes. This is a seventy-four year old home and in trying to renovate them to the point that we wanted to renovate this. Oftentimes we've found that it's less expensive to take the house down and rebuild than selectively demo. A house and try to save certain things, save certain parts of foundations that. It, it becomes, it actually becomes more expensive to, to, uh, selectively renovate than to take it down and start over again. Starting over again allows us, um, as far as the architecture is concerned, to create. The, an open floor plan, uh, house, which is, which is the way people live today. Versus seventy-four years ago, a lot more glass featured to the, to the south, which, uh. Which is good for, uh, people's, um, uh. Good health and, uh, and also views to the golf course. And it also, uh, allows us to place a, create a building that has much better insulation qualities. And, um, uh, can create a healthier lifestyle inside the home by creating a, a dry, uh, and sealed basement. So for a lot of reasons, uh, taking down an older house makes some sense. I am, I am a member of the Historic Preservation Commission in Fairport. So I'm also sensitive to historic architecture. And, uh, this house is not an example of any, uh, fine, uh, style of architecture, nor is it. Designed by a, um, a, a well-known architect, nor was it built for a well-known, uh. Person, so. And then in, in actually tearing it down, as Kim had mentioned, we're able to, uh, take the house and move it away from. The, uh, property lines and get a little bit more setback. And I'll, I'll, I'll turn it over to Larry for that, uh, aspect of it. Both for zoning and also fitting the house into the property. It is a south-facing hillside. Beautiful exposure to the southern sun, as I mentioned. And I'll, I'll, uh, I'll let Larry take over from here. Thank you.
Okay, uh, thank you, Kim and Chuck. Well, um. We had a meeting at Design Works probably a month ago and as Chuck said, and Kim. Looked at what we could do with the existing house. It's a seventy-four year old CMU cement masonry unit basement, not insulated. Seventy-four years old. And the front setback right now is twelve feet, seven inches. It's shown on the plan that's up there. And I just said, you know, I always approach a project where I come up with the best design possible. And then go in and ask for the variances to make that design a reality. So we said, why don't we move it back so that we're fifty-foot setback, um, off the golf course as opposed to the required sixty. It's a golf course. And then we get thirty-foot setback in the front, way more than twelve. We have twenty on the sides, which is more than the, and you probably have a copy of my letter. What if this was a standard, uh, RLA lot? The, the minimum side setback would be eighteen point seven five. So we are greater than that with both these setbacks. If the board thinks that this is, uh, a viable plan. And I know that all you do is smile at this juncture. We would submit next month for the planning board. Then we would look for preliminary approval. At that time Chuck would have, uh, sketches and elevations. It's too premature to do that now because we don't really have a, a positive thumbs up or thumbs down. But from the planning board, we would then go to the zoning board and get the. But from the planning board, we would then go to the zoning board and get the, the variances required to make it reality. And then we would circle back uh, to the planning board for final site plan approval. In that final site plan approval, as you know, would have the zoning variances that were granted and the date that they were granted on the site plan that would ultimately be signed off. Now, the, the boring engineering, we are on a, a town of Brighton Road, so we have road access. Uh, the driveway is going to be pretty close to where the existing driveway is. The uh, water is Monroe County Water Authority and our static pressure is sixty-four pounds. That's at the road, so we got plenty of pressure. The sanitary is a little bit of a bugaboo because we were notified that of the fourteen lots on Elmwood Hill Lane, five of them, including this one, were never um, legally connected to the sewer seventy-four years ago. So, you know, my, actually, I'm doing a sewer in Pittsburgh right now where I just reviewed the manhole submittals, but um, when you do something like that, we have pure waters approval, we have Monroe County Health Department approval, and I see Mike Guyon is on this call. So um, I'm sure the developer that developed this seventy-four years ago is no longer with us, don't know who his assign is, don't know who the town engineer was in nineteen, after World War Two, uh, don't know who the commissioner was, and I don't know who the county engineer at the health department was. But um, I will contact Mike to see what the town is doing to get this sewer um, dedicated to the town per state health law, because there are five people that have been provided sewer service and have been paying taxes for sewer service that um, according to Hoyle, uh, this is not a good situation. Uh, other than that, I'll be doing drainage calculations and unlike the last uh, agenda item, we will not be generating a lot of traffic. That's all I got.
All right. Thank you, everyone. I, I, I will say, uh, Larry, we're not just going to smile at you. Uh, well, what we, what we do during concept review is we do go around and ask each individual planning board member to either ask questions or really just give you your basic thoughts on, on what's been presented. Um, you may not hear uh, a unanimous uh, I guess, opinion toward the concept. Uh, you may hear, you know, differences of opinion on certain aspects of it. Um, and to some extent, that is um, really on you and Chuck and Kim to kind of balance out what we're all, we're all saying. Now, that said, you may hear exactly the same thing from all of us and have, and walk away with fairly good direction on, on what to do. Um, so in that vein, I will, I will start. And what?
I just wanted to say the Conservation Board did um, request that we reach out to people like um, Habitat for Humanity, Historic House Parts, and try to recycle as much building material as possible. So we will, um, we will do that. Of course, uh, building code, not sure whether you can reuse dimensional lumber like two-by-twelves, but is requested by the Conservation Board. Um, we'll see if there are people that would like the material.
Okay. Yeah, um, you know, in this, this, this plan, um, you know, but for the fact that, you know, we've, we've driven by it and seen the lot, uh, doesn't represent, doesn't uh, illustrate in any way the, the vegetation that's on site and vegetation uh, that may be removed as a result of this and some of the topo that does drop off toward the south that uh, also may be affected by this layout. Um, so this is one layout and I, and I'm sure that Chuck has the capabilities, as do all of you involved, to develop multiple options. Uh, this was drawn in CAD or uh, some version of it and it's not a, it's not a hand-drawn sketch and it, it does imply that uh, although I'm, I'm sure I may be wrong, that this is a decided footprint. Um, so I would, I would just say, you know, to me, the configuration does work okay with the uh, alignment of the street, the adjacency of homes, but I can't really speak to how effective it is with regard to topography or existing vegetation uh, that may be valuable. Um, and I do believe technically, I don't, I don't know if uh, this has been to our uh, Preservation Commission just for consideration. Uh, I know Chuck's probably done some research on the criteria and mentioned some of it in his uh, in his presentation, but I think we, we actually look for a letter from the Commission on this as to whether or not it is in fact uh, a historic structure. Um, things like swimming pools, you know, that's a, you know, those, those shapes and final designs can all be uh, amended if uh, setbacks become an issue. I, I think there's some room in this for flexibility to make sure that you minimize the number of variances that, that you need, but I personally don't see any real issues associated with what you're presenting uh, here tonight. That's me, I will pass off to Karen because Karen, I see you at the top of my screen.
Well, I, I would just like to ask a question about uh, the plan for the vegetation that's an older neighborhood, there's a lot of very mature trees on the site and yet you're looking down this slope toward the golf course. What kind of thinking have you had so far about how the vegetation plan looks? Is it too soon to ask that?
I, I don't know if that's a question directed at me or it's directed at Kim, but we would be developing a planting plan, you know, foundation planting around the house and then also um, planting, you know, in the backyard. Um, a bunch of those trees were Norway maple, which is a um, invasive species and very soft and basically a uh, a nasty tree, nothing grows under Norway maple. So um, we've not really developed a planting plan at this point.
Okay.
And normally, um, I don't know if this is going to be the case, but a uh, a very well-known architect, landscape architect here, not Bill Price, told me that the landscape should be one-third the cost of the project. His initials are MB and his offices are in Honey Island Falls. Bill knows what I'm talking about.
MB. Yes, I would say that there will be definitely some strategic planning um, that both softens the, that, that maintains some use, views, but um, s- softens the landscape between the house and the golf course as well as some formal beds coming in, but that, that is as of now, a bit premature, I guess.
All right. You all said Karen?
Yeah, for the moment, I may come back.
All right.
Thanks.
John, you're on the screen next.
Sure, thanks, Bill. Um, I, I credit you with the bravery to determine after an adequate amount of time that it was not worth it to try to rescue the nineteen forty-eight house and you could do much better by knocking it down and starting from scratch, so it's very brave of you and uh, I, I actually give you credit for that. Um, because in all honesty, the, the photographs you attached of the existing house are not very flattering. Um, and I did notice that you, you have not increased the square footage much, so I, I give you credit for that also, that looks like the existing house is just over thirty-seven-hundred and you're just over four thousand for the new house.
Correct.
Yeah, so, no, I think you're, you're, you're going in the right direction and um, you know, I'm sure there'll be uh, you know, better plans developed as, as time goes on here. And uh, I say, uh, just carry on. Thanks, thanks for sharing it with us.
Thank you, John.
All right, John, Jason, you're next. Larry, let me get through everybody first, okay?
All right. Um, just kind of uh, knowing what everybody else has said, I think, thanks for coming in this early on this. Um, at this point, I don't see anything that I really need to comment on, I think I'm generally fine with the way it's going. I agree with what Bill said about uh, coming in with some more details about how it's going to impact uh, the current site, the contours, um, the planting and things like that. Uh, but for now, I'm, I've got really nothing else to add.
Okay. Right, Julie, how about yourself?
Um, kind of on the tails or attaching to Karen's comments and uh, the comments about the invasive, would be nice to see um, an emphasis in that space uh, put towards uh, native, more native plants, but that's a small, small thing in the large scale here, but that's my thought at this moment. There are more to come, I'm sure.
All right. All right. Um, let's see, um, Jeff, what about yourself? Do you, did you have any comments? I think you've had a conversation with the applicants, but uh...
Yeah, we, we've spoke a little bit. Um, there's some engineering comments and there's some comments in the Conservation Board that uh, we'll be forwarded to you after this meeting. Um, one thing for Larry is that the side setback is not, it will not, will not be twenty feet, it'll be larger than that. Um, I think the way it's calculated will be the, where the front step back goes on the side lot lines, you would draw, draw a line from that intersection point from each side and then it's, it'd be fifteen percent of that. I think it's, I did a rough calculation, it'd be closer to twenty-six feet, um, so I'll just give that a second look and we, if you have any other questions about it, you can feel free to get hold of me. And then um, there, there is the issue with the sanitary sewer that um, Larry brought up before and that's something that you'll have to work with the town to, to figure out a solution to that.
Can I raise my hand? This is Chuck Smith.
No, I'd like to get in here, Bill.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, okay, uh, yeah, Ken, go right ahead.
Thanks, Bill.
Come back.
Um, let me just uh, jump on what Jeff just said and address directly to Mr. Heinegger. Um, my gut reaction when you were talking, Mr. Heinegger, is if you think you're building a property on this lot and tying it into an illegal private sewer, you're very much mistaken. Uh, and if you want to build this property and have sewer service, you better figure out how you inspect that sewer and make sure that it is in adequate condition to be dedicated to the town of Brighton. You can work with our sewer department and Commissioner Guyon on that, but please do not make the assumption that the town is going to be taking efforts and spending our money to make that private sewer something that your property can use. So that is on you, sir, and on your client, not on the town. Um, secondly, um, Mr. Smith, uh, you made some presumptions about the historic character of the property, that's not for you to make, that is for the Historic Preservation Commission to make those determinations if and when this project goes forward. And you apply for a demolition permit, that demolition permit, before it is issued, will be referred over to the Historic Preservation Commission. The Historic Preservation Commission will undertake an analysis as to whether this property might be designated, that the board might have interest in designating this property um, and therefore would block the demolition of the property altogether. So that's the actual process. Um, I just want to educate you gentlemen, since you don't seem to be educated on that process at all. That's my comments.
Okay. Um, all right. Um, I'm, I guess I'm, I'm not entirely sure where, where the planning board jurisdiction comes in with, when it comes to things like the sanitary sewer connection and whether or not the applicant is responsible for themselves or for, only for themselves or for other, other residents that may be in a similar situation. Um, but I, I think that is for uh, the town commissioner, attorney and uh, the applicants to kind of work through. Um, uh, let me ask Chuck, you, you had a comment, uh, did you want to respond to a...
Uh, yes, thanks, Bill. I was just uh, mentioning, I wanted to mention that uh, even though the footprint looks like it, it belongs to a well-laid-out designed house, that's not the case, we're still very loose and waiting for uh, more feedback, so.
Okay. Yeah, I, I figured it was probably quick to draw it up and uh, get it in, but um, when, when we do, we do concept for, you know, various size and scale projects, we kind of like to see almost the tissue sketches that, that evolve to the preferred alternative, you know, for the homeowner, um, or for the, the project sponsor. Um, and how, kind of how you got there, just so that, that we have an idea of how, how something was arrived at. Um, that's, that's maybe, maybe at your next meeting. Um, Larry, did you have a, did you want to respond?
Um, yeah, the reason I had my hand up is like, I, when John Osowski was talking, I forgot to mention that we would be using um, ICF forms for the basement, uh, which is a styrofoam form that gives you a very, very high insulation value in the basement compared to what's there now. Um, I'll talk to Mike Guyon about the sewers. Uh, some of you know, I was the town engineer of Amherst, I had five hundred fifty miles of sewer, um, and fifty-two pumping stations, so um, I'm pretty familiar with the sewers and I'll get together with Mike about how we can get these five homes uh, legal and uh, I need to do a little bit of uh, shoe leather with County Health Department. Um, Tim Seeler is in tomorrow, Thursday's is day in, um, I'll talk to him about how we rectify this situation. Uh, also, could you go over the second part of Ken's, um, that this then goes to the Preservation Board and they kind of decide whether or not this house stays or doesn't?
Yeah.
Yeah, Jeff, do you want to take care of that? I, I can, if you, go ahead.
Yeah, when the, when a house is, starts going, can be concerned to be demolished before, before the planning board gives their approval on that, it has to go to the Historic Preservation Commission and they'll make a determination on um, whether it may be, may be worth designating and um, if not, then it would, then it would be, it would go, they send a letter to the planning board saying that it's not.
Or they commence a designation process and it goes forward and a complete cultural survey is done and the board then considers designation, in which case that would block the demolition.
In the, in the sequence of that, Jeff and Ken, uh, is it, is it the demolition permit that triggers the uh, HPC review? And if the applicant were to, you know, submit a, a demolition uh, request tomorrow, would that put it in front of the, would that get it in front of the Historic Preservation Commission?
I, I would think that the cutoff for July has passed.
Oh, sure, sure, I'm sorry. I, I, that was figuratively, but if they, if they're, if they decided as they're progressing plans on this to resolve the, the question of whether it is or isn't, um, they could, they could proceed with that on a separate track, couldn't they?
Yeah, and, and maybe even the, the easier way to go with that, um, and smoother way to go, just like there's concept review here, there's concept review at HPC as well. So you could go informally in front, we have a uh, open forum, much like the town board has an open forum, and you could talk to Jeff about getting on the agenda to talk... much like the town board has an open forum, and you could talk to Jeff about getting on the agenda to talk to the HPC at open forum about, hey, here's what we're planning on doing. What do you think? Is, is there an interest? Is there some concern, um, about, um, us thinking about demolishing this home and building something new? I think that's the best way and the easiest way and the quickest way, um, to get, uh, some feedback from HPC on that issue. Jeff, what do you think?
Yeah, I mean, I would want to give it to them with some advance to be able to look at the structure a little bit.
Yeah, of course.
Yeah, no, I, I just.
But we've, we've had folks come in and do exactly that, Bill, is, is in
Yeah.
informal, if you will, um, concept, if you will, on, on, uh, the demolition issue.
Okay, all right. Okay, thanks. So if I can, uh, summarize this, uh, for you, Kim and Larry and Chuck, um, it seems like as you're, as you're progressing, your, your plans and your concept sketches, you might want to do this informal or concept review at historic preservation, just kind of put that concern uh, behind you or, or, you know, realize that it may be something that you have to address. And any of the research that you've done, you know, uh, you know, the, the board will, the, our commission was probably going to want to do their own investigation and, and consider this. But from our, from our standpoint, I didn't, I don't think you've heard anything uh, terribly shocking, uh, on this, you know, sounds like the, some of the infrastructure issues, which infrastructure in older neighborhoods is, is always a, a bit of a concern. Uh, and then as you, as you progress it and you have a topographic survey with, um, you know, your contours and your trees located and, you know, may, maybe you have that information already, but we would like to probably see that, uh. And if you are hiring, uh, a certain firm out of Honeyoy Falls, then understanding what the existing trees are, what the existing tree, uh, conditions are, would be good, would be good to know and, and how you might be able to work those into the, uh, saving those into the orientation and configuration of the building and the rest of your, uh, your site improvements. But we wish you well and we hope to see you back as things progress.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, guys.
Thank you. Good night.
Okay, good night. All right, everybody ready to kind of head back to the top of our agenda?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so we're, we're moving the, uh, Talmudic, um, applications a little further down uh, for review, so we're essentially starting here with, uh, seven P O one dash 22. This is the application of Norland Associates LLC and Evolve Additive Solutions as less C for conditional use permit. Uh, again, this is at three town line circle. Do we have a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll move that we close the public hearing.
Okay, whoever started, um, can second.
I'm all second.
Okay. Uh, motion and second to close the public hearing. Uh, Jeff, do you mind calling the roll?
Altman.
Hi.
Price.
Hi.
Deb Cox Snyder.
Hi.
Osowski.
Hi.
Ford.
Hi.
Thank you. All right, is anybody prepared to, uh, make a motion on the Norland Associate Evolve uh, additive solutions application?
I'll do it. I'll do it.
All right.
Okay. Uh, correct me if I make any mistakes. I move that the planning board finds that the proposed action will not have a significant impact on the environment. The planning board adopts the negative declaration prepared by town staff. I move that the planning board adopts the 10 findings outlined in the planning board report based on the application submitted and the testimony presented. And I move that the public hearing be closed and the planning board approves application seven P O one 22 based on the testimony given, plan submitted, and the 18 conditions outlined in the, in the staff planning board report.
I'll second. Oh. Give it to Jason. He, I saw him. You know, bad speaker, bad computers, turn off. All right. All right, uh, application seven P O one 22, we are moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? All right, Jeff, please call the roll.
Altman.
Hi.
Price.
Hi.
Deb Cox Snyder.
Hi.
Soski.
Hi.
Ford.
Hi.
Okay. Brings us to application seven P O two 22. This is, uh, Jason Reinwald, Fox's Deli. Less C for conditional use permit uh, for outdoor seating at uh, Fox's Deli 3450 Winton Place. Uh, do we have a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll move we both close the public hearing.
I second.
Uh, moved and seconded to close the, the hearing. Any discussion? Jeff, please call the roll.
Altman.
Hi.
Price.
Hi.
Deb Cox Snyder.
Hi.
Soski.
Hi.
Ford.
Hi.
You willing to try two in a row, Karen?
Uh, sure. Uh, I move that the planning board finds that the proposed action will not have a significant, uh, impact on the environment and that the planning board adopts the negative declaration prepared by town staff. I move the planning board adopts the 10 findings outlined in the planning board report based on the application presented and the testimony given. I move the public hearing be closed and that the planning board approves application seven P O two 22 based on the testimony given, the plan submitted, and the nine conditions outlined in the planning board report.
I'll second. Okay, application seven P O two 22 moved and seconded. Any further discussion?
Uh, I was gonna ask if you guys wanted it to be a condition that they, whoops, that's the next one. Oh, my God. I was gonna add myself.
Never happens. Okay. Please call the roll. We are moved and seconded.
Altman.
Hi.
Price.
Hi.
Deb Cox Snyder.
Hi.
Osowski.
Hi.
Ford.
Hi.
All right, thank you. Our, uh, next application is seven P O three 22. This is the application of Chris Sardone, uh, along with, uh, Generator Supercenter of Upstate New York as agent, um, for a generator located at 115 Metro Park. Is there a motion to close the public hearing? Motion by Jason?
Second.
Second by, second by Ford. Any discussion? Jeff, please call the roll.
Ford.
Hi.
Soski.
Hi.
Deb Cox Snyder.
Hi.
Price.
Hi.
Altman.
Hi.
Okay, public hearing is closed. Three in a rows too many, Karen. Can't ask you to do it. Jason, you got one in you?
I got one.
All right.
You're just really gonna have to yell, Jason. You're really hard to hear.
Is this any better?
No.
No.
Sorry. Uh, uh, seven P O three 22, correct? I move that the planning board finds that the proposed action will not have a significant impact on the environment and the planning board adopts a negative declaration prepared by town staff. And that the planning board approves application seven P zero three 22 based on the testimony given, plan submitted, and with the 14 conditions outlined in the planning board report.
I'll second. All right, uh, moved in second. And Jeff, did you have something about the conditions?
Yeah, I was wondering if I put the condition in there to consider screening the generator. The vegetation, I was wondering if that's okay or if you want to require it.
The way, you mean the way you've got it written?
Yeah, it's consider the use of landscaping to screen the generator. I don't know if anybody feels strongly about requiring it.
You know, in various locations, we, we have required this in the past, uh, primarily when a commercial property is adjacent to residential. This is adjacent to another industrial facility with, uh, exposed air conditioning or some type of air handling units that are not screened directly next door. I, I am personally not. I don't, I don't believe that it's necessary.
Okay.
That's me. If, if others feel differently that, that, uh, you know, there will be those cases where, you know, screening, fencing, plantings are going to be necessary. I just didn't think this was one of them.
I, I agree, uh, but more green is always better, uh, but in this instance, uh, not necessary to require it.
Thank you for pointing that out. You are correct. Karen, any feelings one way or the other?
Well, I, I originally was, uh, going down the road of wanting to require it, but I don't feel strongly about it, so I could go along with just the recommendation.
Jason, you're the author of the, uh, motion.
Generally agree with screening, but, you know, with the property next door and having those two big, whatever pieces of equipment are right out there. I, I, I think the language that's in there now is fine.
Yeah, and John?
Yep. It's, it's fine.
Okay.
Okay.
I'm gonna just make a general comment while we're talking to the owner and say, please consider screening with landscape plantings. Thank you. Okay, we have a motion. Uh, and a second, would you please call the roll?
Altman.
Hi.
Price.
Hi.
Deb Cox Snyder.
Hi.
Osowski.
Hi.
Ford.
Hi.
All right, everybody, thank you. All right, um, brings us to the application seven P O four 22, Mount Reed Emerson Street Properties LLC and Herc Rentals, H E R C, as less C, they need a conditional use permit uh, to allow for construction equipment rental facility at 1220 Brighton Henry at a Town Line Road. Little, little hesitant on this, um. I think, um, sorry, I'm sorry, I'm stalling. I'm, I'm stalling because I'm I was, I'm just thinking that, um, whether this requires a table or if the conditions on this can be worked out through staff and, uh,
Bill, um, i- if I could speak to that and Jeff, um, I'm sure will echo what I said. Uh, we did have a staff meeting, um, in prep for this meeting. We discussed this project. Um, Commissioner Guyan was there, Jeff was there, I was there, Everett was there. Um, our town engineer. Um, staff does not believe that it has been provided, um, legible drawings or adequate information that it could make any recommendation on this project. Um, and, um, we need to have proper submissions so that we can have proper review at the staff level. So, um, I will say that it was staff's recommendation, um, that this matter be tabled to give the applicant the opportunity to provide what would be legible drawings, adequate information, because we don't have it now.
Yeah, I, yeah, I appreciate that, that, Ken. I, I, I did want to, you know, have it, have the opportunity to kind of almost get it to a point, you know, where we could just kick it back to, to town staff and, but it'll take just as much time, um, doing it that way, so maybe we, uh, consider tabling the application, uh, pending further information requested by town staff.
I think there's a lot we, we need from them to be able to make that.
A- a- and I think the applicant has the answers and has the information. I, I, I do agree that the, the presentation and getting that, all that information on a set of plans that can be properly filed is, is what we ask for. All right, I will make a motion to table application seven P O four 22, uh, pending submission of information requested in the, uh, staff report, which includes, I'm sorry, I gotta get to the proper application number. Two. Does this actually have a number of conditions? Oh, 17, 17 conditions. Yep.
I'll second.
Thank you.
Okay. Uh, moved in seconded. Any, any further discussion on the application? All right, Jeff, please call the roll.
Altman.
Hi.
Price.
Hi.
Deb Cox Snyder.
Hi.
Soski.
Hi.
Ford.
Hi.
Motion's tabled.
All right, thank you. Okay, application, uh, 10 P N B one 21 has been adjourned to August uh, as has application five P N B two 22. So, uh, that is going to leave the applications of Talmudic Institute, uh, and I will turn it over to John Osowski, uh, at this point, and I will recuse myself from this application.
Hey, Bill, before you leave?
Yeah.
Do we need to discuss the, uh, establishment of lead agency in regards to the Jewish senior life expansion? Should we, do we need to discuss that and get that settled before you? Well, he's, you're not leaving the meeting.
I'm, no, I'm not leaving the meeting.
Not, are you coming back?
Yo.
Or just do that later?
Yeah, we, we can do that just between.
All right.
After that and we'll get signs in as well. Thanks.
All right.
Before we get started, Karen, I had a couple of questions about potential conditions for some of these, these upcoming ones. It's now the time. I, I want to talk to about it before we get into like table. Can you hear me?
Hold on. I gotta turn up my volume so I have a better chance of hearing you.
Yeah.
Next month, it won't be this bad.
Okay, I'm at 100%. Go for it.
All right. Talking about neighborhood access.
Yep.
Anything, any condition we can do that might ensure some level of access outside of an easy. And then the second part of that question is, would the addition of fencing, let's say they, security said they need to fence. And then the second part of that question is, would the addition of fencing, let's say they, security said they need to fence this off? Would that require them to come before us again? The next question, can we condition it so that the permit needs to be renewed and include traffic as part of that review? And finally, can we condition it so that any future, uh, any future uses need to maintain the proposed access agreements? What can we do to ensure those agreements are enforced? And then can we condition the addresses so that any new uses get a Winton Road address? That's it.
Wow. Good points. Thank you.
Questions?
So, um, before I address Jason's questions, um, although we did joint hearings, I think it is important for the board to consider each of these applications separately, as the board may wish to take separate or different action on each of the applications.
I agree.
Which application is it that you would like to take up first?
I think, I think we should take up the one with the Montessori school first.
Um, Jeff, what application number is that, please?
Five P O two twenty two.
Very good. So we'll discuss that application. I'm gonna try to answer your questions, Jason, and I may miss some because I was scribbling notes, but, um, not sure my notes are entirely accurate. But I did want to, I did, I'm glad you asked the questions because I did want to talk a little bit about what um, authority the board has and what authority the board doesn't have. Um, so here's what I think I heard during the session in the public hearing tonight. Um, and, um, I think I heard the developer say that it is not willing to close the Idlewood entrance. And I thought I heard the developer say that it is not willing to grant a formal easement across its property. That's what I think I heard. Um, I will tell you that in reverse order, and this was one of your questions. Um, I do not think that the planning board or the town at all could insist upon a public access easement without it being considered a public taking, which would involve condemnation and compensation to the owner of that property, whoever it may be. Um, I will also note that there has never been a formal easement or right of access. There was one speaker who talked about, we've always had the right to use this property. That in fact is not the case. They've always had the ability and the use of the property because the school district permitted it, but had never granted any public access rights. And the school district could have said, stay off our property, this is for school use only, but did not do that. So I think that was an important distinction to make. I will say also that what I know about the access from Idlewood is that actually the access from Idlewood Road itself um, starts at a town owned, town of Brighton owned right of way, sort of a stub street that comes off of Idlewood and goes to the rear of those property lines on Idlewood. And then it is connected to the Brookside School by a driveway and a loop. Um, I do not believe that the planning board has authority to abandon or terminate the use of that town right of way, only either the superintendent of highways or the town board would have authority to do that. So where all of this leads me is to this conclusion, and I'll get back to some of your other, uh, questions as well, but I wanted to make sort of this larger point, which is my belief is, um, that the planning board with respect to the Montessori conditional use permit application is presented with an application that it can either approve or disapprove. Um, to disapprove it based on traffic, um, I believe that there would have to be some empirical or objective evidence in the record to support the fact that the use proposed would have a negative impact on the existing traffic in the neighborhood. And I do not believe that the record contains any such evidence at all. Um, in fact, I believe that even the testimony from the neighbors was supportive of the idea that the continued operation of Montessori School will have no change. But the neighbors are looking for change, right? They're looking to make the situation better than it is or has been for the last at least twenty plus years, maybe as far back as Brookside School, uh, has started operating in that neighborhood. But that is not within the purview of the planning board to make things better. The planning board has to approve or disapprove the application as may based on the record presented. Um, and I do think that, um, there is risk in, uh, the action of disapproving this if there is not the record to support from an empirical, objective basis, evidence of traffic problems, um, that are created by this use. So um, I did want to provide that guidance and caution to the planning board in considering this. I do not think that the planning board could condition its approval on the mandate that the developer cut off access and create an alternative roadway. They've said they will not do it. Um, and they may, um, get their application granted or lose their application, uh, one way or another because of that decision. But it is in fact their decision. I do not believe that you can compel that either. Um, fencing, if they wanted to put up fencing in the future, I think they would have to comply with town code. Um, if it was a fence that complied with town code, um, uh, Jeff, I, 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 I'm gonna lean on you a little bit here. If they put up, you know, a fence that was within town code, would they need to come back for any approvals or just get a building permit or depends on the fence?
Um, I mean, it depends on the fence and what would be considered the, the yards of the yard of, but I think it would just be a permit. Um, I don't think there's anything different as far as commercial properties go.
Um, and, um, what was your other question about a future use perhaps?
Yeah, I was, um, talking about the, the future access, making sure that any future uses that may come in uh, maintain the same access agreement. So the things that are going out to Winton now, if you're coming into that space, you're gonna still have to go out to Winton. And then how do we make sure that that's enforced? And then there was, there was a good point about addresses that I saw, and I don't know how that works. But making sure that their addresses are a Winton address, so that if people search for them, they're not being directed through Idlewood because it has an Idlewood address.
Yeah, um, so address assignment, I thought was a function of, um, oh, boy, um, I think the town plays a role. I think the postal service plays a role, and I think that the emergency services also have input on that. And it is something, I, it's something we could look into at the staff level. Um, and we could certainly talk to the developer about. Um, and maybe that's something, uh, with respect to the, not this application on the Montessori conditional use permit, but on the the Talmudical overall project application that we just need some more information on. I will tell you with respect to access, um, that I also heard the developers say that they are willing to commit to, um, making sure that all Talmudical Institute traffic other than the Montessori School, um, be directed through the Winton Road side. And if they're willing to agree to it, then I think this board can make that a condition of approval of that aspect of the project. Yes, do. Um, so, um, and I think they are willing to commit to it, and I think they've said they're willing to commit to that. Was there another question, Jason? I'm sorry.
Oh, that was it, actually.
Okay. And I will, just procedurally, I'll just say that on this application for the conditional use permit for Montessori School, um, I think, perhaps the next thing to do would be to, um, have a, uh, consideration of a motion to close the public hearing on this particular matter. Uh, Jeff, it looked like you wanted to jump in though and say something.
I was gonna say about, um, the uses on this property are very limited by, by zoning.
Yeah.
And, and the only thing that doesn't need a conditional use permit is basically residential housing. So if it's anything other than a residential house, it's gonna need to be in front of the planning board for a condition.
So then we can then, can kind of further confirm that access for those uses as they come before us?
Yeah. And it's, it's a lot of the uses are, I mean, it, it's kind of schools. Um, I think like senior residences, that kind of thing that are daycares, that would be conditionally approved in the district.
You know, one thing though, Jason, that I, I, I also want to throw out there before we, before, before you take up what I just suggested you take up. Cause this, this goes to your issue or your question about future uses. Um, I, I mean, the permitted use for this land, of course, is single family residence. Right? And if it was developed as a single family residence, you're talking about a parcel of land that could easily hold. Well, I, I have estimated fifty. I have been told by the planning department, I am way underestimating that, and then it's closer to a hundred uh, single family homes, um, all of which would likely have access through the Idlewood neighborhood, not out to Winton.
Generation, the church generation from that.
The church generation would be gigantic through Idlewood, gigantic. So I, I mean, that's what the actual, you know, permitted, without a conditional use permit, somebody could come in there and build single family homes.
Well, thank you, Ken. I appreciate it.
Yeah.
So am I the only one that feels that the developer is really missing an opportunity here? Because I don't, I don't think it's that big a deal to build the driveway and close the entrance. But obvious, obviously they do. Obviously the Montessori School does. And, um, I don't know. I ju- I just feel like, you know, r- rather than doing our job to make Brighton a better place and improve a situation where the neighbors say, gee, this could, this could be better. Our roads are narrow. You know, we got almost a hundred cars coming through here several times a day. You know, there's an opportunity here that we, we don't want to miss. Am I the only one that feels that way? If that's the case, then I'll, I'll shut up and let this proceed the way everyone wants it to proceed.
I wouldn't say you're the only one, John, but I'm not sure if I'm as, as full bear as you are. Um, as Ken mentioned, we have, you know, it's it's not really something we can, at this point, that they, they committed to not do. It's not, you know, we can't condition that would be a.
Yeah. Well, I'll tell you, I'm, I'm, we only have four people who are gonna vote on it tonight. If, if we're gonna vote to approve it with the conditions as they stand, I'm gonna vote against it. So we might as well table it for next month for when there'll be more people who, and then my vote will make a difference.
Um, and, and on that, John, um, it has a slightly different effect tabling. So if, if it came up, if somebody made a motion to approve the application, seconded, and it only got three votes, it would not pass, but there would be no action and it would get carried to the next meeting. You are correct. Tabling that would be a similar effect, um, but, um, without that voting record. So, uh, but you're, you're not, you're not wrong in that it cannot be, um, passed with only three votes.
Right.
Um, we need four vote, we would need four votes to defeat the proposal as well. So we have to be unanimous to defeat the application as well.
Yeah, because I mean, in all honesty, I would like to put in a condition that they build one of those driveways or the other.
Yeah, I'm telling you as attorney to the board, I do not believe that's a lawful condition to impose.
Sure, I understand that.
Yeah.
I, I, I wish they had taken to heart all the comments they received, but they didn't. And so it, it is what it is.
Well, I think they take them to heart. I think the issue really is, um, that their use in Montessori, we're talking about Montes, the Montessori application here. The Montessori use is not changing. The traffic conditions are not changing. They've been this way for at least twenty years and, um,
Yeah, that doesn't mean we don't have the opportunity to make an improvement, but that's so be it. You know, that's fine.
I think you should make, um, either a motion to table or a motion to close the public hearing, one or the other.
I move that we, uh, that application five P zero two twenty two be tabled based on the testimony given, plan submitted. Um, additional information is requested in order to make a determination of significance and to have a complete application. The ten items outlined in the planning board report are required to be submitted no later than two weeks prior to the planning board.
I'll second that.
I didn't hear half of it, so I don't know what I would be seconding or agreeing to.
So if, if I may just jump in, uh, Julie, so it was a motion to table.
Okay, that, that, okay.
It's a motion to table and John seconded it and.
Okay, I just didn't understand the first.
Certainly the reasons for the tabling or the conditions are somewhat irrelevant. It's simply a motion to table.
That's fine. I understand that part.
It's not a motion, yeah, not a motion to be discussed or debated, then.
I understand. I just didn't hear what it was being proposed.
Okay, thank you. Uh, should we take a vote on, uh, tabling it?
Yeah. Uh, Altman?
Hi.
Brad Cox Snyder?
Hi.
Asowski?
Hi.
Ford?
Hi.
Motion's table.
Okay, now we have a five P N B one dash twenty two Talmudic Institute. And I think we're still looking for a lot of information here.
Yeah, there's, there's some information that we would like to have for, make a secret determination, so we won't.
Yeah.
Principally on the flood plain information, flood control, uh, plan. Um, and that's really, I think, Jeff, um, that was principally the information that our town engineer felt he needed in order to complete environmental review at the town, at the staff level. Is that right?
Yeah, that's correct.
Yeah.
Um, Ken, procedurally, how, is it the planning board that would decide preliminary, the preliminary and final will be okay next time, or is it something that staff would decide?
Yes. So typically, you know, if, if the planning board were to table this matter for submission of additional information and getting the vibe, that's where we're going. Um, then, um, I would imagine that the applicant and/or the African professional staff would be in touch with our staff to talk about what is needed, what needs to come in, and whether, um, staff would be in a position to review or what this, what staff would need, I should, should say, to be in a position to make a recommendation with respect to preliminary and final. But ultimately, whether it gets preliminary or final approval is of course the board's decision, right?
Yes. Yes, thank you.
Prove that application 5P NB 1-22 be tabled based on the testimony given and submitted. Additional information is requested in order to make a determination of significance and to have a complete application. The 22 items outlined in the planning board report are required to be submitted no later than two weeks prior to the next planning board.
I'll second that.
Thank you. I'll call the roll.
Jeff.
Ford.
Aye.
Soski.
Aye.
Brad Cox signer.
Aye.
Altman.
Aye.
Motion's table. All right, that's the last of the public hearings.
All right, you want to invite Bill back?
Okay, all right. So we are down to, we have a, an advisory report to send off.
Yeah, we sent the advisory report off to the town board. And so this is, this is looking to establish, it's looking for the planning board to allow the town board to become lead agency for the project.
Just give me, I know it's late, give me two minutes to just summarize what this is about. So this is the junior senior Jewish senior life proposal to amend their incentive zoning approvals, which is before the Brighton Town Board to create basically two new residential towers. You've seen this very briefly. Right now, the town board has indicated that it is ready to proceed with the incentive zoning process. Part of that, the incentive zoning amendment process, part of that, of course, is seeker review. And because ultimately the decision on whether the incentive zoning approval should be amended is a town board decision. The town board has said it would like to be lead agency for that process. And it needs to reach out to other involved agencies, the planning board being one of them, to say, do you consent to the town board being lead agency? What will happen if you consent is that the town board in conjunction with staff will complete the seeker process. This project, if approved by the town board for incentive zoning amendment, will still come back to the planning board or site plan review. So that is still in your future as well. So that's, that's sort of where we are procedurally. And that's, this is just a request to whether you would consent to the town board being lead agency for seeker review for the amendment of the incentive zoning approvals.
I move the, the board respond to the request from the town board that the planning board concurs that the town board should take lead, lead agency on the Jewish senior life amendment action.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded. Uh, any other discussion? Now, anybody, Karen, Karen, you understand seeker, I, Julie, I'm not sure you may have.
I'm, I'm getting there.
May have been a lot of jargon there for you, but.
I'm getting there.
Jargon, what? Yeah, yeah, there's, so whenever there's a, these, when, when we review the environmental aspects of this, you know, we're generally the ones taking the lead agency. We're the ones taking responsibility for reviewing the environmental impacts. But the, the other folks that are typically involved are folks that have actions or approvals or permits of their own to issue when trying to build a project. So someone establishes themselves as lead agency, they have to send out letters to DOT or a water authority or a SHPO, the state historic preservation office or DEC, any number of potentially involved agencies and ask for their concurrence on lead agency. This is just, they have typically 30 days to respond. We're probably somewhere in that 30 day period right now for us to respond back to the town board. So we'll, we'll try and give you little snippets of training on it as we, as we go through.
Always appreciated.
Yeah. Okay, we have, we are moved and seconded. Jeff, will you please call the roll?
Yep, Altman.
Aye.
Bryce.
Aye.
Brad Cox signer.
Aye.
Soski.
Aye.
Ford.
Aye.
Thank you. Bill, as part of that, I think we'll need you to sign the paper and bring it to town.
Okay, fine. I'll be at town hall tomorrow afternoon.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah.
If you give it, if, if it's, if you're not still there, would you give it to, to Mike or Ken?
Yeah, I, I should be there.
Okay, I'll, I'll just come see you.
Okay.
Okay.
Don't give it to Ken, he won't be there tomorrow.
What? All right. Okay, we're ready for signs? Woo. Is BU, okay. So this is 1648.
Yep, for B salon, they were in last month, but they have been tabled by the architecture review board. So this is their revised design and it was approved by the architecture of you for.
Okay, all right. Uh, so we probably ought to do these one at a time, right?
Yeah.
So I'm, I move to approve as recommended by the ARB.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded, all in favor. Aye.
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 Okay, next.
Uh, next is 1650 for Ross Tresser Regional Health Building face sign for 2250 Brighton, Penrith, it's online.
Okay. Again, I'll move as approve, I'll move to approve as recommended by the architectural review board.
I'll second.
Moved, moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay. All right.
Um, this is a replacement 1651 for 100 Kellwood, Kellie Boulevard. They're just changing from the logo on the left to the one on the right. Those approved it by the architecture of you board.
All right. I move, we approve as recommended by the architectural review board.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
This is 1652. Plaza.
Yeah, do you want to go down a couple of.
Are these, is this one sign or is this multiple signs?
Oh, there's three different signs.
Okay. Is there a an elevation that shows us kind of where?
Yeah. Um, like a site plan?
No, I just, just a building face elevation or, or are there drawings?
If you go up.
Just a second. Sorry, I was, uh, there's, there are some trolls that I'm removing.
Okay.
Thank you.
There we go.
Hopefully, yeah, they should have like a elevation.
Okay.
Really small. Very small.
And so there's, there was three signs that were allowed per the incentive zoning. These meet the square footage and the location of the previous, the incentive zonings that were given to them. But they still need to come in front of the board for approval and they were approved by the architecture.
All right. Well, to me, they must be reasonable because I can barely read them. All right, I guess I'll, I'll move on application 1652 to approve as recommended by the ARB.
I'll second.
Open second. All right, any discussion on this, anybody? Anybody have any heartburn at all on this?
Oh.
Yeah, quite. Okay, all in favor? Aye.
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 Oops.
Uh, this is also in Plaza Plaza for, I'm assuming Tan Zoom Fit. They made the square foot requirements and they were, the architecture review board had a condition or recommended some spacing. There was some spacing that would be fixed and they did fix it. There's a revised one.
Does, does this show the revision?
I don't think so.
And is the revision just to get more space between them?
Uh, there was more, it was like, it was, it was to even out the spacing between Zoom and Fit and Zoom and Tan.
Oh, oh, oh.
No, there is a revised one, but it's not, it wasn't on the, you can make it into the.
Okay, so they did comply with the, with the regulation or the condition. Okay. I'll move, we approve as recommended with conditions from the, by the architectural review board.
Second.
Hey, uh, this is Ken just jumping in real quick. Which building is this on, Jeff?
Uh, building two, it's the, yeah.
Sadly, I know the buildings.
Me too.
Should, should we? I feel left.
You don't want to, you don't want to know them that intimately.
All right, all right, okay. All right. Thank you. Let's, that bring us to.
We need to vote.
Oh, we need to vote. Didn't we vote?
Nope.
Okay. All right, moved and seconded to approve as recommended with the condition by the ARB. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Um, the last one is for 1890 South Winton for Frachi Lang was approved by the architecture.
Okay. Seems reasonable. I'll move, we approve as recommended by the ARB.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
One's unanimous.
Thanks, thanks, everybody.
All right, everybody. Have a, stay cool.
Yeah, stay cool.
How are we already, what?
Yeah, I'm, I'm sure Holly's ready.
Thank you.
I thought we were going to make midnight, but.
I didn't want to do another midnight.
Thanks, everyone. Good night.
Good night.
Bye, everyone.